Good evening and welcome to those here in attendance and online to the May 15th meeting of the Johnson City City Commission held here at the Water and Sewer Services Complex. It is currently 6:00 PM and we will call the meeting to order. Greg Salier, Disaster Relief Coordinator for Heritage Baptist Church, will give our invocation and if everyone will please stand, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight. Lord, we lift up our mayor, our vice mayor, our commissioners. God, we ask that in everything that is done here tonight, that you be glorified. Father, as each person comes to speak, as decisions are made, God, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, your leadership in everything that is done. God, we thank you tonight for the blessings that you have poured out upon our city. And God, as you continue to do so, Father, we just rejoice tonight in who you are. God, we thank you for the opportunities that you place before us each and every day. So God, tonight, we ask that you just take care of this meeting. God, that you lead and you guide and you direct in each and every way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ball.
Mayor, our first order of business is to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting held on Thursday, May 1st, 2025.
And I would ask that the minutes be corrected to reflect on a couple of the early votes I abstained and that isn't reflected in the minutes.
I will make those changes.
Is there a motion with that amendment?
Move for approval.
Second. Ms. Laffs.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Abstain, I was not here.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
The next order of business is public comment. We have several members of our community signed up to speak under public comment.
Okay. Do I have that list? Yeah. Before we have public comment, I'll read a few statements. Public comment is limited to those who have signed up at least 12 hours in advance. Comments must be about an actionable item on the agenda. You'll have three minutes and Mr. Willis will be our timekeeper. And this is your opportunity to speak. We don't respond. It's our opportunity to listen to you all. So just wanted to make that clear so you use your time as effectively as possible. First person, Sylvan Bruni.
Before we start the clock, if this is related to the ordinance, like a lot of other speakers, is it better to do it now or to wait until the ordinance time in the public hearing?
Yeah. We, yeah, thank you for asking that.
Okay, so you'll have to wait until the ordinance. So I'll speak in opposition at that time?
Okay. Yeah, you can do that. Absolutely. Thomas Cook.
Hi, how are y'all doing? My name's Tom. I live in Garland Acres, directly almost across the street, less than .3 miles from where they're wanting to rezone the property for the Bitcoin mining operation for Bright Ridge. I object to it because of what it's going to expose our people, my veteran population that goes to the VFW and all those two, the animals, the kids, our elderly, our people with mental illness and all these things. It's kind of scary. The noise that everything exposes them to, I was reading today, I was doing some more studying, you know, each transaction with a Bitcoin takes 4,000 gallons of fresh water to cool it. Few times that by millions of transactions going on at one time. Where's this water going to come from? Who's going to pay for all this water? And when they discharge the dirty water, right there in that area is Camp Bird Creek, which is a protected area that comes through there. And anybody else who would go for a dump something in that creek, they'd go to jail. It's not right. I mean, these folks are sitting in here with the red shirts, white shirts, whatever on, most of them are, I say most, they all are objected to this foolishness, I call it. I look at it this way. My grandparents grew up in this city. My wife's parents did. I did part of my life. Grew up on a farm most of my life, farming. So I speak very plainly. I don't stutter about things. My grandpa told me best, simple talk's best understood. So I'm not going to try to throw out all this mumble jumble to you. My thing is this, if you pass this and rezone this and allow this to happen in our neighborhood, not out in a hundred miles out in the field or 25,000 acres out in the field, in a neighborhood, directly across the street from Tipton Hanes State Park, that has all kinds of things going on, directly across the street from my house, basically, less than four tenths of a mile from Ashley Academy, I think it's not a very wise thought out thing to do. I think you need to look at, there's two businesses in the back of that property that have it 36.2 acres. They have 114,000 square foot buildings and you hear nothing. Nothing. Right here's a car come and go as they go to work and that's it. You don't hear anything. You look at the property, it's been used as a dumping ground for construction materials and, uh-oh. My three minutes are up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will say that with this, and I'm sorry, I just have to have a second. This is what you want to subject us to. Louder than this, this has not been amplified. I went down there, this was 3:30 in the afternoon, over 80 decibels. I went 500 yards across the street to another house and the man could hear it in his house.
Thank you. Next on the list is Carmen Cook.
Hello, I'm Carmen Cook. I am a resident of South Johnson City. I live in Garland Acres. So I'm here to speak in opposition of adding the amendments to allow or permit use of data centers or the cryptocurrency mining in our code. And for the obvious reasons that my husband spoke about, I talked to Ms. Ball earlier in the week. She says you all have read the studies. You know all the bad things. I can't find any good things. I can find good things for the company. Clean Spark, just in the last quarter, they have grossed revenue of over $163. Now what nuggets of that do we get here? Bright Ridge is going to get some and so there, the city and the county get some of that. We know we have to have money to exist. But we live in one of the most desirable locations in this country. People are packing up, giving everything they have to move here. They've already lived in California. They've already lived in Asheville. They've already lived in Charlotte. And they come here, I'm a lifelong resident and I see all of my liberties being taken away. Life in South Johnson City is already rough. You know that we live with a lot of homelessness. I mean, it's all over our city and that's, that's just a part of our society. There's no easy fix for it. But we've been dealing with it for a long time. We've, we live with, we've got a high density population. We do have the schools there. We do have the Tipton Hanes. We have, even though we're right there in the city, we're surrounded by industry already. But that industry right now does not interfere too badly. But we know from our neighbors down in Jonesboro, those people have been through hell. They've had to sue. And then on the verge of them winning, now we want to pick up this ball in Johnson City and run with it. Why do we want to do that? We have existed fine. We've had great service from Bright Ridge and with reasonable rates. All along, why do we have to have Bitcoin now? Why do we have to have it? You know, just so many things. We talk about the noise. Yes, that's huge. But there's so many other things, you know, the water pollution. We are, we have wildlife right there. We have a large farm that's full of deer, cattle. We, we have people in the area who raise bees. Bees can't take that. So we have the promise here. So you're saying, well, we'll bring it here and it'll be much better. How is it going to be much better? Why was it not better down there? Why do we even entertain this? We don't want it in Johnson City, ever, not just in South Johnson City, but I wouldn't want to expose any of my neighbors to it. You know, a lot of us in this room, you know, we've, we've opened in prayer, we believe in the Word of God. And the Word of God says, one of the, not the first, it says to love your Lord God with all your heart, but number two is to love your neighbor as yourself. Yeah, we've got to exist in this world. It's part of business. But would you want to inflict this on any of your neighbors?
Thank you, Ms. Cook.[704.82][704.82](Applause) Next on our list is Robin Phillips.
I have a copy for everyone. Would you like to distribute that? Thank you. I am here tonight to address each of you and Bright Ridge about how you are making decisions to control our lives in a very detrimental way. Bitcoin mining facilities bring complete havoc to people and businesses that are within three to five miles away from them. Bitcoin mining will affect our children, our grandchildren, veterans, adults and children with special needs, wildlife, pets, honeybees and destroy your property values. It will impact us individually in ways we may at this particular time not even realize. There have not been enough reputable studies conducted on the long-term potential health impacts of the facilities. These centers, which use a surplus of electricity and energy, may even require their own substation within a mere 200 feet of residential properties. These substations alone cost $1 million and up. Servicemen were told in the past, Agent Orange was safe. Society was told Roundup Weed Killer was safe. Women were told Johnson &amp; Johnson Baby Powder was safe. But what have we discovered through time was that they were toxic and even lethal. Bitcoin mining does not bring revenue to Johnson City nor employment opportunities. It only profits Bright Ridge and the company that owns the facility. That being said, Mr. Hunter, you are mayor. You, sir, currently sit on the Bright Ridge Board. Commissioner Brock, you have sat on the Bright Ridge Board also. Why would you, Mr. Hunter, the Johnson City Mayor and Commissioner Brock, allow and even encourage this to be put in Johnson City when Washington County fought to move it out and even took legal action? Why will all of you not be more transparent with us, the citizens, the voters of Johnson City? So there would be less need for what we are doing tonight. Lastly, why won't you, the elected officials, unite to do what is best for all the people of Johnson City, not just what is best for Bright Ridge and those who profit through owning these facilities? Trey Kelly with Red Dog, which has been acquired by Clean Spark, publicly stated, "We do not want to go where we are not wanted." So why are you pursuing bringing it to an area where it is clearly not wanted? You each took an oath when entering office before assuming your duties. This oath included to support the Constitution of our country and to faithfully discharge the duties to the best of your ability. So help you, God. These are words that should never be taken lightly or ignored. I only have one more thing to say. May I finish, please?
Go for it.
Our Constitution states, "All power rests with the people." It does not say, "All power rests with the commissioners and mayor," nor does it say, "All power rests with Bright Ridge." It says, "All power rests with the people." Folks, that is each and every one of us. We all say, "Stop Bitcoin mining from coming to all of Johnson City, Tennessee."[966.43][966.43](Applause)
Next on our list is Rachel Holly.
Thinkers community, I'm Rachel Holly.
He'll, he'll adjust it for you. He'll adjust it.
Okay. Okay. All of you are elected officials. You're paid by the taxpayers' money and I feel like that you should have to defend and protect our city. And it seems like you're doing the total opposite of what we need to have done here. We know all about Bitcoin. It's not good for residents, no jobs, constant noises and it, the military uses sound as a weapon and it causes the same symptoms as Bitcoin mining. So why, I mean, why would you want to subject us to this? I, I don't, I don't understand. Harms animals, health issues, and also the businesses related to Bitcoin. I'll have lawsuits against them. Clear Sparks Investors, the investors can't even trust them. They're dirty. We know Bright Ridge is. We know the other one, let me see, Red Dog, okay. Now, on your May the first meeting, it says clearly that you have three options, three. You all have given us one. We must pass this amendment. You have three. Approve the text amendment as requested is what you have selected. Number two, disapprove the text amended amendment and state the reasons for denial. Postpone action pending the receipt of additional information. So what would we want to have? Why can't we have two? Disapprove the text amendment and state the reasons for denial. Also, you say, the city says that, let's see, I want to read this. This is also from the Five One Committee. They're looking to provide for the expansion and protection of commercial and industrial area in order to encourage growth and development of city, cities tax base. This is not, this is not what we want. And if you would listen, you have all these rules. You want us to jump through hoops. You have to have it 12 hours in before you can speak. You get three minutes. We will not have a town hall meeting. Listen, if you want to listen to us, listen to us. We don't trust any of you, none. And you know what? I think that we are at the point where we need normal, everyday people up there that don't have their own agendas. And I feel like you all do. You're on Bright Ridge. You knew this was going to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.[1195.01][1195.01](Applause) Next on our list is Shelby Holly.
Who is in this fight? This fight is the people. The people of Johnson City, all the people of Johnson City. And they, they don't look at just this location only. It could be any location in Johnson City, surrounding area. You know, it, it shouldn't be in any location in Johnson City. The damage to, doing to every person, adult, child, it just, even, even animals. If you have a pet, would you want somebody to come and kick their dog? Would you not get upset? That's about what I feel, somebody kicking my dog. Now, if you think, I, I've considered the people that's closest to it. The trailer park is right across the street from this site. Now, what is a trailer? It's a metal structure building. What will that do? The sound, the vibrations, all that will drive in people crazy. I mean, a hurdle. I mean, physically, emotionally, mentally, and it's not, it's not good. We talked about our neighborhoods, but I'm just talking across the street. Now, consider, you're going to hear facts of all bad things about this. And I ain't going to give you the facts because you already know, you've probably been the latest listener you've been given, gives you the facts. The sickness alone, the sickness alone from this will affect people not to be able to go to work, not be able to do their jobs. You think about the economical base of that, it's going to affect where they can't go to job, employers ain't got no staff to work. It's going to be like COVID. It's a, it's a disease. It's going to create so much structural damage to it that it'll affect your tax base from your, from the employer's necessarily. I, I worked right across this field. I've worked there 43 years. It's a noisy building. We've lost a percentage of our noisest machines to China and India. We don't produce that electricity that we have. You all got to supplement that electricity from some other business. And that business, you may be looking at Bitcoin, but it's not a good choice. Now I'll give you the last few minutes or a few seconds here about this. Not only will the cost affect, but you're allowed to answer for that. And you, you have lawyers in Johnson City. Lawyers in Johnson City, you know, even one stated that you can't stop a business, to new business in Johnson City in certain areas. Well, if that's the case, then you give the opportunity for a poison to come in this city and will cause. And God gave Adam this as a steward to take care of all, of the land, of the garden. I'm asking you all to take care and be the stewards of the land of Johnson City.[1416.65][1416.65](Applause)
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Jerry Roberson.
Well, there's not a lot I can say that hasn't already been said, but I'm just going to state some facts. So I went out to the limestone plant to hear what this thing sounds like for myself. On the 11th, at 12:30 at night, I run a decibel analysis. This thing was 98 decibels at its peak with 92 sustained decibels with the eco barrier and this is from the postage sign. This is the middle of the night. I had already talked to one of the ladies in the day. It was loud enough during the day. She said, "Oh, no, no. What they do is they wait until off-peak hours and then this thing sounds like a small airport." I didn't believe her until I got there. This thing was louder than a chainsaw in the middle of the night. Right? I, I just don't see any way that you can regulate something like that into being something that can go into any of our industrial areas inside the Johnson City limits, none of them. And I'm asking you to please not change the laws to accommodate something ridiculous and absurdly loud to come in and cause that kind of disruption in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberson.[1543.21][1543.21](Applause) Next on our list is Brad Bat.
How are y'all, how y'all doing? I'm Brad Bat. It's good to see you. I think there's a lot of important issues going on in this world. This one may not be the most for everyone, but it sure is for a lot of people in this room. And I think what an opportunity to see a bunch of people in t-shirts even, out here engaging. And I'm glad we have an extra session before we vote on it because I think the next two weeks, you might get more feedback. I don't necessarily think y'all have an agenda or not, or I think you're probably trying to do the, the jobs. I just want to speak to the facts a little bit about Bitcoin. I don't normally leave with my resume, but I do have an undergrad in electrical engineering, computer science minor, a master's in computer information system. I've run a software business for over 20 years, so I'm not a dummy on the subject. Bitcoin itself, like a lot of technologies, neutral, good or bad, depends on what you do with it. But Bitcoin mining doesn't produce anything. There's, there's no outcome, there's no byproduct for our community that's good, like a normal business, a restaurant or a factory that produces widgets. And even then, we would regulate those things because we know that some companies will pollute or be bad actors. Not everyone, but we can't always rely on their best intentions. But I think it's important to point out, Bitcoin mining doesn't produce anything other than profit for the person that's coming in and building a $10 million facility. So it's making someone with a bunch of money more money and then Bright Ridge. And we get some tax revenue, right? I hope that's not what's driving it. I think people are right to be concerned considering it's moved from limestone and then the next place they want to put it, no one wants it. So no, no one wants this in their backyard. The second thing I just want to point out, on the, on the fact check that was sent out, when we say Johnson City cannot ban data centers, I get it, that's probably technically true, but we, every time we have a City Commission meeting, we meet on zoning and numerous other things and the, the commission has shown how they'll work with state legislators to carve out laws for Johnson City. So I, I think you're seeing that people don't want someone here, I think mining is a very appropriate term actually for it, someone coming in, using up our resources, putting the people here at risk, perhaps putting our electrical grid at risk? Don't know. Like, but, but that's a concern I think that, that people have. Last important point, these computers, they don't do anything other than Bitcoin mining. So you can't repurpose them afterwards. It's not like we have this data center, now let's use it for something useful like e-commerce or SaaS software or mapping software, whatever. It's for this purpose and, and this purpose only. And then we're left with a bunch of electronic waste afterwards. So, and it's also a gamble on the speculation of Bitcoin rising. So I appreciate your time, taking all the comments from everyone and I see we're at capacity today. So congratulations.
Next on our list is Michael Fowler.
My name is Dr. Michael Fowler and I am a concerned resident of a neighborhood that would be gravely impacted by Bright Ridge's stalled plan to construct a mining facility in a seven-acre I-2 zoned lot in Buffalo Mountain Industrial Park. The lot is situated just behind my home. I share with everyone here a deep investment in the health, prosperity, tranquility and security of our beloved city and its residents. To that end, over the last six years, I have actively engaged in two different forms of civic service, the Public Art Committee and the Growth Management Advisory Committee. the Public Art Committee and the Growth Management Advisory Committee. In both contexts, I have supported initiatives to proactively respond to our city's rapid growth and evolving needs without compromising the livability of existing communities or the integrity and sustainability of our natural environment. The city has argued that the proposed revisions to I-2 zoning to allow use by data centers and crypto-mining facilities are intended to protect communities and the environment. But the proposed regulations fall well short of that objective. I therefore voice my opposition to ordinance 4914-25. Ideally, Bitcoin mining should exist nowhere in Johnson City. City management and the commission tacitly agree to this when they speak only of mitigating problems and not of any concrete benefit that mining would offer. The many issues with crypto-mining are well documented. Immense energy consumption, placing undue strain on the power grid and elevating levels of harmful emissions into the atmosphere. 24/7 noise pollution. Health concerns ranging from higher mortality rates to mental health problems. Diminished property values. Worsened localized weather effects. And harm to pets, farm animals, and wildlife. Fellow residents have and indeed will this evening speak to each of these concerns. Practically, the commission might be unable to prohibit Bitcoin from operating within city limits. But it still has the power to enact even stricter zoning regulations to signal that we won't abide the excess and exploitation of crypto-mining. The question is whether the commission has the will to do this. At the first reading, Commissioner Wise stated, and I quote, "I'm not particularly interested in Bitcoin coming to Johnson City. I'm certainly not going to be recruiting it. However, what I want is to put some meaningful boundaries around it." End quote. Ample research and industry insider experience show that the provisions of the proposed ordinance do not establish adequately protective boundaries. If the commission isn't particularly interested in attracting crypto-mining to Johnson City, then what's the harm in making our regulations even stronger? I respectfully submit that the Commission table ordinance 4914-25, taking advantage of Bright Ridge's moratorium to collaborate with their constituents on drafting new regulations that will better protect and preserve the quality of life and our livelihoods of everyone, all Johnson Cityans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Next on our list is Leanne Craddock.
Well, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to follow all my neighbors. I made a C minus in speech, so I'm very nervous to be up here in the first place. But, and there's been a lot of facts. But I'm going to just say what I have written down and go with it. I'm all for making a profit, but I don't see the benefit of it, especially when it comes to the cost of our community, health-wise, environmental-wise. So, I'm against the rezoning in the ordinance 4914-25. It's got negative health impacts, physical and mental, negative environmental impacts, increased energy consumption from fossil fuels. If we're going to rezone to one area, it doesn't make sense because we're not protecting all of Johnson City. We're just protecting part of Johnson City. And my kids are .2 miles from where this is being proposed. My daughter has ADHD, and I worry about her and me living there. I've already, you know, tried to look at other houses and get out of Johnson City, which is a shame because I grew up in Johnson City. I lost my husband, who was a Johnson City firefighter, to brain cancer. He always worked in very toxic environments. And I don't know genetically if my kids would be impacted because, or at more risk. You know, I feel like I need to get genetic testing for them for environmental causes that affected him. But I know this can't be good for them. So, it's a huge concern for me and our neighbors and obviously everyone in here. And I guess what I would ask is, can you promise me 100% that my children are safe with this facility being put in beside my house? And I've also researched, there's green ways to do this. So, if we want to get it done and profit off of it, there is a website. It's called CleanUpBitcoin.com. And it's environmentally safe ways to do the same thing that you all are wanting to do. I encourage each of you to research it. It reduces the negative impacts and the energy usage by 99.95%. So, I challenge us to trailblaze a new way to do what you're trying to do if this happens. So, instead of trying to figure out a way to get the old way done, let's use a new way, an innovative way, and be proud of what we put in Johnson City. There's other options, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craddock. Next on our list is Cynthia Humphrey.
Yeah, well, I'll have to...okay, thank you, thank you. No laughing. Good evening. My name is Cindy Humphrey, and I'm an officer of the Washington County Democratic Party. I'm speaking tonight to share on the record a resolution adopted on Monday by our party in relation to ordinance 4914-25. This resolution has been shared publicly on our website and social media, and we'd be happy to email it individually. This resolution invites the Johnson City Commission to take four actions. One, to reject ordinance 4914-25 in its current disposition. Two, to commission independent environmental and economic studies. Three, to establish explicit data-driven safeguards to protect residents, the environment, and quality of life. Those include a statutory maximum decibel threshold measured with a Class 1 meter, the greater of 45 decibels or background A-weighted for an hour, measured at a parcel boundary, negative five-decibel enhancement for any one-third octave band that exceeds the adjacent bands by greater than or equal to five decibels. A statutory mandate to prevent noise at the source, including line silencers on all intake and exhaust louvers, fans and heater exchange fans. Prohibition on forced air chip cooling for facilities exceeding 1 megawatt compute capacity. An escalating statutory fee structure for violations of these provisions at $500 a day, double daily, not $50. Explicit power-down authority after seven days of non-compliance. An enhanced minimum setback distance of 3,400 feet from residences, schools, parks, hospitals, and other sensitive community locations. An enforceable minimum $10,000 per megawatt-year revenue-sharing agreement or impact fee structure to ensure tangible community benefits insulated from pilot flexibility. Four, to facilitate meaningful public engagement throughout the process. I hope that you will take these recommendations made in good faith and work collaboratively with the community and neighborhoods in consideration of these safeguards. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Humphrey. Next on our list is Pete Russell.
Hello. I'm from California, moved here to have the good life. Protecting our communities. I know you should have taken an oath to listen to the people and protect the people. First realize that children are growing up in these communities, and their development is occurring. Coming in and delegating higher-decibel allowances to near homes and communities should be a red flag to you all. Even 70 decibels harms cognitive development. Loud continuous noise can create an atmosphere filled with frequencies that do harm and cause health issues. Our bodies require good frequencies to fight off disease, heal ourselves, create a healthy mind, energy, and help our body to operate as it was created. Many scientists know the negative or bad frequencies that can cause all kinds of injuries. The results are, well, it's bad. This is actually to the point of crimes against humanity. We know about frequencies so much that we have these known harm data lists. Here are just 20 known facts loud fans and continuous noise can cause, especially at night. 60-plus decibels can cause hypertension, increasing stress hormones. Heart disease and heart attacks go up by 8% to 12%. Tinnitus, ringing of the ears goes up by 64%. Memory loss in children goes up by 20%. Dementia risk is 27% higher in areas of loud continuous noise. Sleep deprivation, insomnia are 72% more likely if nighttime noises exceed 30 decibels continuous. Clinical depression with nighttime 50 decibels and above is a 25% increase. Type 2 diabetes increases 11% for every 10 decibels over 55 decibels. Immune suppression, cortisol spikes to 50% in loud environments. Migraines, 45% more frequent. Reproductive and developmental harm, premature birth and ADHD is 20% to 35% worse. Animals to have hearing loss is at a 90% risk, especially with 95 decibels. Livestock stress, 15% less eggs and milk production. Artery thickening 34% faster with chronic noise. Hearing loss up by 400% if exposed to 95 decibels for eight hours a day. Autism, overstimulation is up 80% meltdown frequency in a 70-decibel. Gastrointestinal issues up 30% and IBS flare-ups. Stroke risk of 30% at plus to 60 decibels. Childhood obesity. Suicide rates increase plus 66% with nighttime noise over 50 decibels. I could go on. Now, in three minutes, give us your overwhelming reasons and peer-reviewed studies along with your qualified independent studies that we should increase and add to our health risk that is already a well-known health crisis time in history. During COVID, health officials and legislators propagated misinformation by disregarding scientific integrity and manipulating data. True health must become a re-recognized action. We have lost our bearings. The new saying is that you are not discriminating against new business. No, it is time to get a reset and look at the value of actual health over the infamous, "We need to grow technology and expand." Where is your value to our health?
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next and last on this list is Kelsey Hodges.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Hodges, and our family recently bought a home in South Johnson City on Garland Way. One would say it is our dream home. It's as quiet, full of fresh air, wildlife, and a vibrant ecosystem. We were disappointed to hear that the neighboring industrial park was possibly being used for a cryptocurrency center. I am a wife and a mother, but tonight I'll be speaking from a place of clinical expertise as I am also an emergency medicine PA, physician assistant. I have compiled some scientific studies and articles to speak to the physical harm that can be done with these cryptocurrency centers. This has been done in conjunction with my husband, who is an emergency medicine physician. The research has been provided to each of you. First, the idea of these cryptocurrency centers is new. We do not have any long-term studies on these because they have only been used in the U.S. for a short amount of time. Lack of data does not equal safety. In medicine, we are evidence-based. Without evidence of safety, we cannot recommend. Shouldn't this also be true of you choosing to allow something with a lack of safety data, not only in our area, but within our city limits? I'd like to begin with the newest research study from Harvard. The air emissions emitted from these Bitcoin mines contain a specific pollutant referred to as PM2.5, a type of air pollutant that is linked to cancer, heart disease, and dementia. These effects can be felt within miles of these centers, not feet. Because these are so new, we do not know the extent of the effect on individuals. However, we do know that Bitcoin mines use as much power as full cities. That means that in our neighborhood, we could have air emissions comparable to a very large city concentrated in a small area. The second piece of evidence speaks to long-term health effects from the noise pollution, as my neighbors have described. The World Health Organization has deemed this type of noise, quote, "increasingly dangerous for public health." Symptoms experienced because of noise pollution from a cryptocurrency center include chest pain, dizziness, tinnitus, and high blood pressure. I share these thoughts with you today with a sincere hope that you will thoughtfully reconsider the proposed rezoning of this land. Facilities of this nature are not well-suited to be placed near residential neighborhoods or schools, and there is growing evidence that their presence can bring real harm to surrounding communities. The decision before you today is not just about a parcel of land. It's about the long-term well-being of Johnson City residents for generations to come. I will also ask you to reflect on this. Would a proposal like this be given serious consideration in other neighborhoods such as the Gump addition or Town Acres? Too often, lower-income areas bear the brunt of these types of developments, and that inequity should give us all pause. The people in these neighborhoods matter. Their health, their quality of life, their future matter just as much as anyone else is in our city. Their voices should not be outweighed by promises of revenue or short-term gains. Please consider the broader and long-term implications of this development. Let's make choices that reflect care, fairness, and vision for all of Johnson City. Thank you all.
That concludes public comment. Ms. Ball, next on the agenda?
Yes, we next, next we have presentations of recognition for employee scholarship recipients. We have Adrian Bab and Emily Banks. So, we have Steve, who will be, Steve Willis, our assistant city manager, will be presenting these.
Good evening, yes. Thank you, Ms. Ball. Our employees here at the city since 1994 have contributed over $180,000 toward college scholarships for dependent children of city employees. Over 218 scholarships have been awarded. So, the two we want to recognize tonight, as Ms. Ball mentioned, is Ms. Ariana Bab. Unfortunately, she was not able to be here tonight. She's a senior at South Green High School, and probably as I'm speaking, she is graduating this evening. So, she was not able to be here. She is the daughter of Melvin Bab, who works here in our water-sewer department. But we're happy to have Ms. Emily Banks here with us tonight. She and her father, if I'll ask them to come up, please. Emily's a senior at Unicoi County High School, getting ready to embark on her college career at UT Chattanooga. And she's going to be studying nursing. And her father, Jared Edwards, is here with her this evening. He also, a city employee, works in our water-sewer department. So, just a few things about Emily. As I said, she plans on studying nursing, and her goal is to become a registered nurse for either emergency care or pediatrics. Some of her extracurricular activities include, she's the co-captain of the cheer team at Unicoi County, on the yearbook team, the WBDN News, HOSA, part-time employment at the Center for Community Outreach at ETSU, where she obtained 50 hours of community service, OSHA training, and an office assistant at ETSU and Irwin Utilities. So, congratulations, Emily.
Mayor, the next presentation of a proclamation is recognizing June 1st through 7th, 2025, as Garden Week.
Ms. Ball, we have one other scholarship recipient.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh, you're fine.
We also have our John W. Campbell Scholarship to be awarded here this evening. You may remember Mr. Campbell. He was a longtime city manager here in Johnson City, and as a way that he wanted to give back, each fall, he gives $500 scholarship to a city employee dependent. And Ms. Madison Stacy will be awarded that scholarship. I'll ask her and her dad, John Stacy, who works in our IT department, to come forward. Madison is currently a junior at ETSU studying pharmacy and chemistry. And I love her career objective. I want to read it to you. "To become a dedicated pediatric pharmacist locally." We like that. "To provide compassionate care and understandable explanations to children and parents." So, congratulations, Madison. So congratulations, Madison.
Thank you, Steve. Um, we have, is Natalie Olson here to accept this on behalf of the Shady Oaks Garden Club?
We're happy to have you all here, and I'm going to read this proclamation and then I'll let you all say a few words if you'd like, okay? Whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the sowing of seeds and the care of plants. And whereas gardening is a challenging and productive activity for citizens of all ages and experience levels, including those just learning and those having years of experience. And whereas gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle that reduces stress and teaches that and teaches that that rewards come teach us that rewards come from diligent efforts. And whereas gardening adds nutrition, beauty, fragrance and splendor to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage and flowers. And whereas gardeners beautify our community, enhancing quality of life for our citizens. And whereas gardeners advocate the importance of creatures, large and small, and their role in a balanced, productive ecology. And whereas National Garden Week encourages members of garden clubs across the country and worldwide to enhance quality of life to serve others in the communities where they reside and work. Now, therefore, I, John F. Hunter, Mayor of Johnson City, do hereby proclaim June 1st through the 7th, 2025 as Garden Week in Johnson City, Tennessee, and urge our community to acknowledge the importance of gardening and the numerous contributions of gardeners. Thank you.
Thank you. I think if I learned anything tonight, there is more a need for gardening than ever. So go gardens.
Thank you all.
I don't know if y'all know this or not. How many wildflower gardens have been sown around Johnson City?
I think we have to.
Eight. So there are eight wildflower kind of pollinators all around the city. They've just been planted. Is that correct? So, so Mr. Miles, when should they be coming up?
Hopefully the next month.
How long does it take them to come up? Y'all know that.
What seeds?
Yeah, yeah. So look around. I think you'll really appreciate it. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you.
Ms. Ball, what's next on our agenda?
The next item is consideration of the consent agenda.
I will also, since Dr. Fowler was out last week, I'll start with you. Anything you would like to pull from the agenda?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just a, just a brief rundown on 6.1.2.
Anything else? Edit?
That was bull.
Okay. All right. And Commissioner Wise?
It's worth acknowledging 6.1.1, just so folks know about the request and what's happening there.
Okay. Ms. Ball, will we start with 6.1.1?
Yes, and I'm going to ask Lieutenant Jim Tomich to make his way as I read out this one. Is to consider approval to declare one police department vehicle as surplus and as a donation request. And if our Lieutenant Tomich would come forward and tell us about this item.
Good evening. This is a surplus vehicle out of our fleet. Some time ago, a deputy from Mitchell County, North Carolina approached our quartermaster and explained to her that the town of Spruce Pine, North Carolina, had suffered some serious devastation from Hurricane Helene and that they were having to spend all of their available funding on infrastructure needs. Their sewer system in particular was almost completely destroyed and so that left them very little else to operate their town. The quartermaster contacted Chief Cook there in Spruce Pine and asked what their need was. And he said that, among other things, they needed cruisers, police cruisers, because they did have several destroyed in the storm. This vehicle that we are talking about is a surplus K-9 vehicle. It's a 2015 Ford Explorer. We selected it out of the fleet. It was due to be deadlined anyway. Our K-9 unit recently acquired a new vehicle, so it is an additional spare. They do have another spare available to them already in case one of their frontline vehicles goes down. So we're not going to be without some backup. And it was, it was declared usable and surplus to be given to Spruce Pine.
Thank you, sir.
Right, thank you.
And the next item there was a request on was item 6.1.2. I would ask our assistant city manager, Alicia Summers, to come forward. This is the consideration of approval for a lease with ETSU for 401 Ash Street, known as the Ash Street Courthouse.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. I'm Alicia Summers, Assistant City Manager. This is a request to for you all to consider enter into a lease with ETSU. They'll be available to come next month and speak to more specifics about what they're planning on doing inside the facility. But it will have three of their departments in there, more community oriented. They'll be hosting community events as well, but it's a five-year lease and we'd like for it to start in July.
Any comments?
I just think it's worth remembering, when we solicited the special appropriation from the governor twice, because we had it and then COVID took it away, and then we solicited it a second time and got it, and that one stuck. It was to advance rural health and economic development. And so I think the partnership with ETSU has the potential to honor that commitment. If you have not had a chance to go see the Ash Street Courthouse, it is really wonderful what they were able to do. And for those who understood the unique limitations of that property, it had some deed restrictions on it that required it remain in a public use. And so had we not gotten that special appropriation, we would have had this redeveloped Walnut Street corridor and then an Ash Street courthouse that was literally falling down on itself. And so we kind of evaded that outcome. So it's exciting to see it moving toward its end use.
And it's, they did a wonderful job on the renovation on that, on that building. And it serves as an anchor for that area that we've invested funds into to revitalize that West Walnut corridor.
I might just add to that, that that building was built in 1910 as a, as a post office and a post office bank. It was, there was really nothing over there much, except at the same time, the person who really was behind all this was George L. Carter, who also gave the property for East Tennessee State University. So he had a tremendous impact on our community and was not anybody who ever wanted any credit for anything, but he was a serial entrepreneur and helped other businesses get started around the turn of the century. So a lot of the entrepreneurship that we've experienced and is part of the reputation of Johnson City comes from those roots. And as Commissioner Wise said, if you haven't been able to go over there and see the building on the main floor, some of the way it will be used by East Tennessee State University will allow the public to come in and to experience art and a lot of nice things can go on there. So the restoration was, where's Mr. Trivett? Did he stay here?
Oh, he's back.
There he is. Randy Trivett, our assistant deputy city manager's team went in and managed and supervised the renovation of this building. And it is beautiful. If you go in and see the wood and the marble and the brass and the neat thing is, for many of us who grew up here and we went in that building to get driver's license or marriage license or whatever it was.
Only one person on this IAS got their marriage license in that building. You get to guess who it was.
Upstairs on the second floor. But they left all the original doors that had glass panels in the doors that said Judge so-and-so, because it was a courthouse then. And so it really has an authenticity about it. And when you walk on the hardwood floors, they kind of creak on your feet just a little bit, but it's, it's something that we all should be proud of in Johnson City. And it was an anchor of that corridor then, and it is an anchor of that corridor now. So we've preserved a lot of heritage and history in that building.
It's nice to see it come full circle.
Yep.
If the, if ETSU has any plans, they want to come share the next meeting or two, put that on the agenda and let them.
We'll let them.
Share. That'd be great.
And staff recommends approval on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hunter?
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
It's been a long time.
Ms. Ball?
Yes, the next item is item 7.1, ordinance number 4910-25. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee by changing from I-2 district to R-2 district for property located at 134 Dalewood Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Bryce McNamara, planner with the Development Services Department. This is the second reading and public hearing of the rezoning at 134 Dalewood from I-2 to R-2. There have been no changes to this request. Staff still recommends approval.
Are there any questions or is there a motion?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, forgot public hearing.
Maybe for the public hearing, just give us another, a little snapshot there of why this request is being made.
Yes, so this is currently industrial zoning specifically adjacent to existing single-family homes, and they are requesting that their zoning come into conformity with what is already on the property, which is a single-family residence.
Thank you.
Any comments before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this particular item, please step forward. Not seeing anyone, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Next is item 7.2, ordinance number 4913-25. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee by changing from R-4 district to B-4 district for property located along the Bristol Highway at Creedmore Drive.
That is correct. This is on the same timeline, second reading and public hearing for this rezoning as well. Essentially, this was a request to rezone a portion of a property behind the Toyota dealership to establish an overflow parking lot. The concept plan is binding. Any significant changes, we'll have to come back to the board for a concept plan amendment. There have been no changes to this request. Staff still recommends approval.
Any comments or questions before public hearing? All right. I will open the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak for or against this particular Ms. Walker, if you state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm here really just to answer your questions. I'm Marcy Walker. I live at 1602 Millbrook Drive in Johnson City, and I represent the people that are going to be purchasing the property.
Good.
Got you.
I think we're good.
Okay. You made my life easy. Thank you.
Former city commissioner right here.
Any other people wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and we will move approval.
Okay. Second. Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
The next item is item 7.3, ordinance number 4914-25. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend Article 2, which is the definition of terms and use in the code of Article 6, Use Requirements by District, Section 619, 620 and 622 of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee zoning ordinance as it relates to industrial districts and adding provisions for data centers.
Thank you. Yes, this is a text amendment to the Johnson City zoning code regarding industrial districts and data centers. This is also the second reading. There will be a public hearing on this item as well. Final action would be on June 5th at the next meeting. So as a brief overview of what this is doing and what this is not doing, this ordinance is a revision to the text of the Johnson City zoning ordinance that is providing definitions for use that is currently undefined and regulations for the use that is currently undefined and therefore unregulated specifically. The current uses and definitions in the code are not specific to this use and then therefore are ambiguous and makes regulation somewhat difficult. This text amendment does not allow any additional use to the code that is not already allowed, nor does this change the property zoning in any location within the city, what we would refer to as a rezoning. Taking, and as we'll see later in the presentation, they would also have, they would be subject to additional standards within that I-2 district. So we have a map here. Everything that is highlighted with a red, blue, orange or purple is a possible location as the code reads currently. And going to, with the amendment, you would just be looking at the light purple areas. So there is a decrease in 14 zoning districts and a pretty significant area within the city for possibility of development. So to zoom in and get a better picture of where we're looking here, what could be currently permitted? This is in the gray area along Suncrest Drive. We can see a lot of commercial zoning and some light industrial zoning as well along the interstate exit with, with gray. Moving south to Boones Creek Road, once again, right along the interstate, you can see the MCB Bank that is newly built right here. This commercial zoning extends down, but also extends up to the intersection of North Roan, where we have the Ingalls and a significant commercial presence of commercial zoning in that location as well. Bristol Highway, if we're looking north of about Grand Home Furnishings, we're at the intersection of North State of Franklin merging into Bristol Highway, extending all the way up to Piney Flats with the Food City. Essentially, most of the property that is directly adjacent to the Bristol Highway and within the city limits of Johnson City does have a commercial zoning classification. This gets near Wing Deer Park and a lot of the car dealerships here. One of the most expansive zoning areas that we have that this could be permitted in as with current code is that of the North State of Franklin Road and the North Roan area and their respective intersections with the interstate I-26, as we can see in this area and this area. This here is the mall moving up. We have some light industrial and some medical as we get into the Washington County Johnson, Johnson City Health Department area. And then, as I mentioned, Grand Home Furnishings where Roan splits into Bristol Highway and Kingsport Highway intersecting with Oakland Avenue, coming across over to the Walmart on Brown's Mill, as well as the Sam's Club and extending all the way down State of Franklin here as you go past Franklin Woods and all the way down to the Food City at the intersection of Sunset and, and State of Franklin there. So anything that is highlighted on this map with red, orange, blue or purple, as it stands currently, would be permitted by code. And the goal is to restrict this further. And then as well as the downtown area, we have a lot of commercial districts as you extend on West Market Street going down 11E over towards Jonesboro. By Johnson City Medical Center, we do have medical uses and research technology park uses as well as the downtown, and we extend up the Unaca and Watauga corridors as well. So circling back onto what the amendment does is eliminate all of that possibility and limit it down to the one, the heavy industrial district, which would be the light purple color here. So that immediately gets you out of the possibility of gray in Boones Creek and limits you to just those properties. And once again, we are not rezoning any properties. So those that are existing now would be the only ones that would be applicable to. Data centers would also be subject to the additional standards, which we'll get to in a couple of slides. So the I-2 district, as proposed by staff, is consistent with findings and research of many other municipalities' codes. This is our most intensive district, so we feel it is the most appropriate, adding this as a permitted use, specifying this as a permitted use, provided we will get to those clauses, and removing computer and data processing services, just for clarification. those clauses, and removing computer and data processing services, just for clarification So, getting into the additional standards, this, once you have an I-2 property, they would still have to meet all of these standards. So we have seven of them. First of all, would be referring directly to the noise ordinance, which is in effect for all properties within the city, but we feel it is helpful to guide directly into this. So the use does not violate the noise ordinance or result in injurious or obnoxious vibrations, smoke, gas, fumes, odors, dust, or fire hazards. Next of which is all of the digital data operations are within enclosed buildings. Third of which is the increased setback against residential uses being 200 feet. This would include anything that includes a single-family residence, so R-1 through R-6, the RP districts, manufactured home park districts, and a few miscellaneous as well. Measuring from the nearest property line of the use of the district, whichever is closer to buffin up that 200 feet even farther, the minimum front setback should be 60 feet, so we're not encroaching too close in the front yard to a public road. Type 4 buffer is provided in the case that there is residential property directly abutting an I-2 site. The type 4 buffer is 35 feet in width and does require a actual wall or fence, as well as 35 feet of vegetation. And the last two are specific requirements of full screening on any exterior equipment, whether that be on the roof, wall, or ground-mounted. Making sure that these are screened on all four sides, as well as exceeding the height by a minimum of six inches to have a first round of screening on that. Once again, all of these were pulled directly from in-depth research from other municipalities' ordinances and are very consistent with the findings as we see the increased setback, the buffers with the wall or fence, and plantings, as well as the exterior mechanical equipment. These are all in direct response to what we see as common impacts of the noise and the utility usage and proper mitigation strategies. So within Article 2, and ultimately, the use is going to have to be defined within Article 2. So data center has to have a definition, so this would amend Article 2 to add this in alphabetical order. Recognizing data center and what it is, relating it directly to digital data operations, second of which, associated facilities, and recognizing what exactly is within this type of center, and then the associated uses with the administrative areas and offices. There's two supplemental definitions that will tie directly back into data centers, that being digital data operations, storage management, processing, transmission, including cryptocurrency mining, which all ties back into data centers, making for a clear use only in the I-2. Also, within the proposal or additional amendments, just for clarification reasons, to both industrial districts, first of which being the I-1, using that consistent verbiage that we had on the first point of the extra criteria for data centers, tying directly back to the noise ordinance once again, and using that consistent wording. We also did this with I-2, so any manufacturing process in any industrial district has this wording in it, where you tie directly back to the noise ordinance to make it a lot more clear. Also, within the industrial districts is a section for protecting surrounding areas. We have edited this a little bit to increase just from what was noted as just the city engineer requiring additional submittals to the Director of Development Services. City engineer or the designee can require the additional submittals, and went ahead and added sound impacts on top of that. And that will tie directly into our future work. Where we are currently very close to finishing up a request for qualifications and getting that released, and that will guide additional amendments to the noise ordinance and to other guiding strategies that we can have on sound travel and measurement, as well as additional mitigation techniques and regulatory strategies. Now, within the noise ordinance, we look to specifically address the low frequency in hubbing, as well as vibration, a little bit more closely within that ordinance. It is outside of the zoning ordinance and is not included in this amendment, but that will be in the future study. So as well as implementing the requirement of noise study for a data center. So back to my initial point, this is not a rezoning. We are not changing the zoning classification of any lot within the city. This is not permitting anything that is not already permitted within the city. This is more restrictive based than anything, is adding regulations and is adding definitions and is adding clarity to the code in order to properly regulate this use. So as a quick summary, we are adding new definitions to data centers, digital data operations, cryptocurrency mining within Article 2. They're updating the I-2 heavy industrial district to specify data centers as a permitted use, which would be the only zoning district that would be a permitted use in, and removing the permitted use of computer and data processing services, NBP, just for clarification reasons. Maintaining consistent wording and referring back to the noise ordinance in I-1 and I-2, as well as using that wording for data centers, and explicitly giving staff authority to require submittals regarding sound impacts with the noise ordinance. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. McNamara, can you make some additional comments on the future noise and acoustic study that is going to be taking place and what the timing is of that?
Yeah, so we are looking to get the RFQ done by about, release in about the next two weeks, and hopefully, plan to be back to you in about August or September with that first reading.
And so the RFQ is to send something out to bid to get?
Yep.
A sound engineer.
Yep, professionals in the acoustic engineering field to give us professional guidance on what that study would look like, and as well as including some of those physical impacts and what we need to do to mitigate that properly in the study.
And that study is really kind of going to hit on all I-2 uses also.
Yes.
And so it may be something good to slow down some other, you know, all development till we kind of get some stuff at certain zonings and make sure we get that information.
Just to be clear, though, on the noise thing, that, you're talking about the noise ordinance and the sound study. If I wanted to open a sawmill, I would still have to do a sound study in I-2, correct?
We haven't worked out exactly how it would work for all I-2 developments. However, we are looking specifically right now at a data center and what those humming impacts are.
You're talking, well, you're talking about the zoning code. We've got a couple, we're talking about a couple of different things, and I just want to make sure everybody's clear. There is amendment to the zoning code that would specifically offer some definitions of things that were never contemplated 25 or 30 years ago, and so our zoning code is silent about what is and is not allowed, and where it is and where it is not allowed. But then concurrent with that, we're having a noise ordinance conversation, and I think what I'm wanting to understand is when we get to the point, we would be amending the noise ordinance to begin to take into account some of these sound studies, it's going to apply to everybody in I-2, or is it going to apply just to a prospective data center in I-2?
When we update the noise ordinance, it will depend on what kind of feedback and what kind of guidance we get from an acoustic engineer as to how far we want to go into that. We're waiting on the RFQ to go back into that to look at other amendments to the noise ordinance itself.
An acoustic engineer can say they can set this 200, the last 20 feet.
We'll have a public hearing.
I don't care. I live within 14 miles.
Right, we would like to understand the question right now.
The question is, can he stick this 200 feet from my house and guarantee me I'm not going to hear it? No, he can't. I live 500 yards from it.
Okay.
Being absolutely ridiculous.
So if you all answer the question.
Okay. You repeat. Okay. Go ahead. I have my question. Well, my question is, if somebody, if somebody came tomorrow to City Hall and wanted to pull a permit to put a computer operation in that spot, could they pull it tomorrow without us making any action right now?
Yes.
If we make some action, we can put some regulations pretty quickly, and let me rephrase that, right now, somebody?
Well, we should probably avoid deliberating until we've had a public hearing, so, I mean, it would be helpful to get our questions answered and then?
Well, that's, I'm trying to ask questions.
Okay, thank you.
And right now, from what it looked like from the first map, there's a lot of options that a data center could go in town right now, tomorrow.
Correct.
And, okay.
You got a call center right here.
Sir, this is a warning.
I'm fine.
Well, I'd rather you not leave.
You're being absolute idiots.
Okay.
There's call centers all around this place.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, sir.
That don't make that noise.
If you want to leave, please leave.
I will, and you know what? I'll do everything in my power to get everybody who's loaded out of Mr. Smith. And not a woman if her using it.
Sir, if you need help leading, we can help them.
Come help me out.
I won't, but we can have that for you.
I am not afraid of none of you. Help me out.
Go ahead.
I'm fucking idiot.
I lost my question, I'm sorry. So the discourse is impacted for whatever benefit there was there.
Okay, well, I'm going to open the public hearing. Before we take anybody's comments, again, this is a three-minute time period. Mr. Willis will keep that track, and there'll be a clock up here for you all as well to view. If there's anybody that would like to come speak for or against, feel free. Yes, you can come. Whichever one.
All right. Got a little sheet. Just since we're doing infographics now.
You'll state your name?
Yes, so my name's Dave Adams, Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a daughter at Ashley Academy next to Tipton Haynes and a son on the spectrum who loves the outdoors. I'm an engineer with direct experience in cryptocurrency and mining operations. Time's limited, so I'll get right to the point. Noise and money. First, noise. I understand the intent is to reduce disruption, but this proposal that we have in front of us is one of the weakest I've seen from any city trying to take Bitcoin mining seriously. I know you've seen a Polish demo, a state-of-the-art immersion system from another state. You've been shown Bitcoin at its best, but this proposal doesn't require any of that. It ties data centers to existing noise rules, and as you've already been noted here a second ago, these rules don't protect residents. 75 decibels during the day, measured at your house, not the mine, way too high. 55 decibels at night, way too high. Short buffer zones, wooden fences and metal shells, that's a Hoover Dam trying to hold back noy, like a Hoover Dam of noise, and you've got paper mache trying to hold that back. If we're serious about protecting neighborhoods, this falls way short. I'd rather we just zone it out entirely, but if we're going to try to force a square peg and a round hole, we at least deserve a response to the data-driven recommendations that you've already heard. Decibel restrictions, common. Stronger thresholds for annoying noise, common. We already do it for subwoofers. Sound dampening, common sense. Setbacks, 1,000 foot is the standard for Bitcoin mining operations. I-1 has a 1,000-foot restrictions for adult-oriented businesses, and we want to put this 200 feet from a house. Don't try to tell us it's impractical. Civil penalties and shutdown authority are basic governance. Our staffers are already up to their neck in lawsuits right now. Let's give them a break. Second point, revenue. There's a reason nobody up here is touting the economic benefits of this, and it's not because we don't understand it, it's because they don't exist. Tennessee has a thumb on the scales for sales tax and electricity tax, and the feds have a thumb on the scales for contracted power rates. The Bright Ridge pilot payment is just about the only thing we get money from, and that barely hits 0.3% of our city's annual budget. What we need is direct dependable revenue if we're going to even look at this. Others have adapted to this with impact fees, a way to capture at least some reliable revenue. But as it stands, this isn't just a Bitcoin mine, it's a strip mine. It strips us of our sanity so that some guy in Nevada can say mine. Don't pail packs to people anymore.
I believe, well, you spoke. No, ma'am, you can go ahead, but you'll get to speak.
Hi, I'm Lingavet, I live in Johnson City. I just have one thing. He keeps talking in the rezoning about data centers, and obviously, I'm wearing an Apple much watch, I don't have a problem with technology, but a data center is a different thing in terms of what it uses, what it presents, than Bitcoin mining. So what I'm suggesting is as you work through the zoning language, that you make sure to make that difference, because a data center, if run properly, might benefit Johnson City. Bitcoin mining would not now or ever in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. We'll continue that and people who haven't spoke yet, if that's okay. You don't have to touch that.
Hi, my name is Ann Kirkpatrick. I live in Johnson City. I live in North Johnson City, and I know this particular site is South Johnson City, but I would just, wouldn't want this, anyone to be subject to this. And even if these noise levels are kept low, 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 it's still noise. And if I had even just the slightest noise next to my house, like just like, like, it would drive me nuts, I'd have to move. I mean, really, that's, that would be, that would be a deal breaker for me. And I don't think this would have gotten this far if y'all were concerned, that concerned about people's health. So, you know, there's a lot of people who are against this that aren't here tonight, and you know, this crosses lines, like, there's like a lot of Republicans and Democrats here, it's not a political thing, it's, you know, we're, we're all going to remember who you are, and if this were to pass, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to vote for you guys. We're going to remember who you guys are. There's definitely conflict of interest here. I understand that the mayor here is works, or is on the board at Bright Ridge. I don't understand how these conflicts, there's several conflicts of interest in this city, and I don't know how that is allowed. And if one, if this does, if we did open a Bitcoin mine in South Johnson City, you know, that's just going to be like the precedent for more to open everywhere else. And I just, you know, I could not have one of these near my house, and I just really am very much against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkpatrick.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria Trnawskis. I'm a resident of Johnson City. I'm coming here with personal concern and also informed by my professional job, although the opinions that I express are not that of my employer. I am the spouse of 100% service-connected disabled veteran. My father died, 100% service-connected disabled veteran. I have three brothers who have spent their careers in the military, who are also service-connected disabled veterans, and the beat goes on. Unfortunately, government taking risks on the back of little people is not new. So please excuse the emotion. Point two, my understanding is in this district, we have a very high percentage of veterans who are citizens. You may not necessarily know who they are, walking by them. Some still do not self-identify. Many women veterans do not identify themselves as veterans. I earned my living as a mental health professional, 25 years. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I have worked with high-risk clients, and I know of what I speak. I am very concerned to hear about the potential impact for health on our citizens. I am even more concerned, differently, maybe not more, concerned for the mental health impact. I live within four miles radius of where this is supposed to happen. My understanding is the sound, the vibration, things that we maybe don't fully comprehend because, as was pointed out earlier, there are no longitudinal studies, and no data does not equal no harm. Basically, we're going to be guinea pigs. Also, within that radius are two parts of our major healthcare centers. We send people with severe mental health needs, suicidal, to inpatient care, not within the radius of what, of this planned bit mine coining. And as somebody who does suicide assessments on a daily basis and is a safety gatekeeper for the community and has been for many decades, I would just strongly encourage caution and to get expert impact, because to me, it makes no sense for a veteran to go to the VA and go impatient or receive mental health care with chronic suicidal ideation, or go to Ballot or go to Frontier, depending on the level of care, dealing with these life-threatening issues, and how the community not be there to support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Can I get you to spell your last name for me?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
C-E-R. C-E-R, Charlie F. Romeo.
C-E-R, Charlie F. Romeo, N-I-A, November, India Alpha, U-S-K-A-S.
Thank you, I did not wanna, I didn't wanna butcher it.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, I apologize, I didn't, I handed out too many, so there's only four.
It's all right.
So, good evening, commissioners. I'm Deanna Shanks, I'm a Johnson City resident and a cybersecurity professional. I understand how loud and power-hungry these operations can be. I'm sorry. Especially when they're cooling thousands of constantly running processors. I live close enough that the proposed site's fan noise will reach my backyard, and this really matters to me because I have a collie. Like most herding breeds, he has far, you know, hearing than I do, and like most herding breeds, he's very high-strung. Research from UC Davis shows dogs display measurable stress reactions to even everyday household appliances, far quieter than an industrial fan park. When noise climbs above 85 decibels, livestock start to freeze, startle, and show elevated stress hormones. Similar Bitcoin mines in Texas have been recorded at 85 to 95 decibels, akin to a lawnmower running day and night. Earth Justice's lawsuit in Grandbury even cites harm to pets along human health complaints. If that level of sound reaches my property, my dog could suffer chronic stress, hearing damage, or worse. Many of people moved here precisely because it's quiet enough for animals, children, and older residents to thrive. I'm not here to just say no, I understand that you might not be able to, and others have voiced opposition, my opposition, much better than I could. But I'm here to say if. If we're unable to outright ban it, the mine outright, there's nothing stopping us from demanding guardrails that protect humans and animals. One, we can have an independent environmental and health impact study, baseline noise and wildlife metrics funded by an applicant before a shovel hits the ground. A hard noise cap, no more than 50 decibels in daylight and 40 decibels at night at property line, verified by real-time public monitors that trigger automatic shutdowns and meaningful fines. Expanded buffer at least 1,000 feet from any home, school, park, kennel, or pasture, not 200 feet, and I didn't know 1,000 feet was even the standard. Immersion or liquid cooling only, outlaw open-air fans, open-air fan walls that produce airplane engine roar elsewhere, and a decommissioning and animal impact bond. Escrow funds to the site so that the city can intervene if the operator just walks away or exceeds its limits. So, I'm just asking you to please amend this tonight, or table it until these protections are written in. That way, we can safeguard our families, our livestock, and yes, our dogs and companion animals before the first server starts running. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name's Dr. Moore, a veterinarian. I built Cherokee Hospital for Animals, Unicoi Hospital for Animals. I couldn't have said it better, thank you so much. How many here have a dog? How many here have a dog? A cat? Horse, cattle, sheep?
Chickens.
Chickens, there you go, absolutely, I do too. I don't need to say anymore. I mean, my dogs can hear a pin drop in a driveway. What is this gonna do to our dogs and cats and horses and sheep, goats? I have 40 horses. Granted, I live just below Wiseman's. It's my understanding the distance can be as much, the noise itself can be as much as five miles. I'm just dead-set against it, guys. I don't, I don't think we or our animals deserve this here locally. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Sharon Mosier. I have a question for Kathy Ball, Joe Wise, Jenny Brock, John Hunter, and Greg Cox, and Todd Fowler, and Stephanie. Do any of you all gonna be infected by this? How close do you all live to this? How close? You're probably more likely not gonna be close to it at all. But what if you was? You know, this is inhumane, what you're even talking about. It's inhumane. I don't see how on earth that you could sit here and think that it's okay. You know what? It all has to do with money. And you know what God's word says? For the love of money, it'll send you to hell. You don't believe it? It ain't far off till it's gonna happen. And I'd like to tell you all that truthfully, I don't know how on earth that you've ever got even to where you're at now, 'cause there's so much going on that's wrong. I feel sorry for you. You're pitiful to even say it and say that we're going to determine how you people's gonna live. Are we gonna make it inhumane for people? What's wrong with you? Thank you.
I don't wanna butcher your name either. Spell your name. M-O-S-I-E-R. I was very close.
Thank you. Next, I think it's your turn.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Rowenbeck. We, my wife and I moved here from Florida about eight years ago, and I tell all of my friends and everybody how much I love Johnson City. We bought some acreage down on We Are in South Rome. We just finally, after eight years waiting for a new deck, to sit outside and enjoy nature. And it just disturbs me greatly that this would be okay with anyone to disturb the peace that we have here in Johnson City, in Tennessee, and/or the nature that we enjoy every day. Birds, deer, dogs, cats, birds, whatever. I just, I find it very well put, inhumane, that this would be something that you're okay with. I mean, you're not suffering from this, I don't believe, because I don't believe you guys are living close enough to have to listen to this noise. I had a friend of mine today tell me that her husband's father lives next to a Bitcoin mining, and you can hear it all the time. So, I urge you to please not do this, and not affect these people's lives, and not affect the animals and the nature, and the reason why people move here, for peace and quiet, away from places like Florida that are too busy anymore. So, I urge you please to not do this.
Thank you.
My name is Dawn Jackson. Thank you very much for listening to my wife and our concerns about our pets and animals, certainly very close to our hearts, but one of the things I'd like to explore a little bit is, first off, I hold a master's degree in computer and information security. I'm also the chief information security officer for a global fintech. So, the idea of cryptography and finance, something very close to my heart, I consider myself an expert in this area. But I'd like to talk a little bit about the cost here, in terms of the fact that we're talking about a great deal of noise pollution, a great deal of, obviously, medical concerns that a lot of people have brought up. And this is all to power something that has, essentially, at the end of the day, no intrinsic value. Bitcoin itself, no one actually buys anything with it, let's be honest, the transactions are very few and far between. The only people that benefit from this are the folks that I unfortunately have to deal with on a regular basis, which are the finance pros. They essentially are the ones who are making money on speculation on this. The energy companies are making money off of this. That's about it. It has no public benefit, no public good in any way whatsoever. It's a great exercise in technology and, from a cryptography standpoint, it's a brilliant idea, but really, in the real world, it has no actual value at the end of the day. I'd like to see anyone if you try to order a pizza with Bitcoin. It doesn't happen. So, until it does, I think this has no place, especially in our communities, considering the amount of damage it can do for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Looks like you got it.
Okay, so, I think there's a lot of miscommunication and misunderstanding going on. I think that the zoning engineer is correct, right now, it's real easy to put one of these Bitcoin mines in, and we have got to do something about that. We, the city, do not think that we are going far enough, we need to be more restrictive. So, I appreciate that you are trying to get some of these zones where they can out, but if we can put some more, some more effective zone ordinances in, kinda like the lady from the Democratic Party was talking about, we would be very grateful. So, thank you very much.
And I know you stated your name before, but do you mind saying it one more time?
I'm Jerry Roberson. I'm from Martinella Estates.
Thank you.
Peter Russell, from 3414 South Hills Drive. I think that the point is clear, is that we are learning facts. We're learning that decibels and higher decibels are causing problems, and it's literally encroaching harm to humanity. And I don't want it to turn into crimes against humanity. So, I think we need to pay attention to that, and rethink it, renegotiate it, and actually pull the data from what we know about decibel ranges. Get people to follow into those lower decibels or not be here, because we have a very nice place that is exceptional, number-one place in the United States for a lot of people to recognize as Johnson City. I think that we need to keep it that way. I think that needs to be our focus, because we're not getting any excitement from out here, that we need to go higher and more in-depth into increasing the decibel range. So, if the quality of life does not stay top priority, and if laws are not made clear to protect our lives according to the data, then humanity has fallen. Look at the facts. The way you're dealing with our health is an atrocity. Vote no to these high decibels, and don't mitigate stupidity, stop it.
All right. Good evening, my name is Sylvan Bruny, and my family lives 1,200 feet from Bright Ridge's parcel for a now-postponed Bitcoin mining facility. I would like to thank Commissioners Brock and Wise and Mayor Hunter for meeting earlier this week, and I hope the commission will expand such engagements in public settings, which are indispensable to trust and accountability, and pleased to dispense with the use of maps like was done, which I found very manipulative. Our neighborhood has been mobilizing, and we have collected over 1,300 signatures in our area. Seventy-seven, sorry, 77% of those, that's over 1,000, just over 1,000, are your constituents in Johnson City, and the remaining are from Washington and surrounding counties. Those numbers exemplify why the commission must continue to work with our communities and our neighbors. I also want to address your responses about the limitations imposed by state law, because I found the statutes a lot more nuanced than the total interdictions that you referred to previously. So, first, TCA, paragraph 6-2-201 and sections 22, 23, grant municipalities the power to, and I quote, prohibit, suppress, and prevent all uses of property detrimental to the health, comfort, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants. Second, the referenced explicit protection of crypto mining in zoning by the state legislature, that's HB 2309 and SB 2370, is still pending, and has not been touched by the legislature since March 2023. Third, because there is no crypto mining in Johnson City, and because the ordinance separates data centers from crypto mining, and because the city itself does not engage in crypto activities, there is no precedence risk of unconstitutionality by adopting strong regulations, and here I'm referring to CGS v. Pulaski, 1956, as well as some cases in Nashville. Fourth, the scrutiny for reasonableness and non-oppressiveness through the two-part test established by Tennessee courts in 83 can be addressed. One, the legitimate public interest is the prevention of health and wealth damage to residents, and two, the burden of proof for necessity is established by scientific studies, as you've heard, and dozens of examples across the county. The city has also the power to define conditional use and special exemptions, as referred in the municipal code. Those are but a few of the mechanisms that other jurisdictions in our regions have used to protect their neighborhoods. In Knoxville, they said no to increased electricity output. In Green County, they put a moratorium on crypto mining. In Clarebone County, they performed a due diligence plan and put things on hold until they could get everything right. In DeKalb County, they instituted a 5,000-foot buffer limit. In Greenville, North Carolina, a 3,400-foot buffer limit. So, if you disagree with any of this, please say why, and if truly the state is preventing Johnson City from protecting its neighborhoods, then I hope you will join us in taking this fight to the state. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sylvan. Any others?
Okay, I'm the other half, from California. And I'm sure there's some Californians here that didn't come for this nonsense. We escaped it. Oh, Leah Russell.
Thank you.
Hey. You see a mass exodus from California, other states? You wanna see that here? We didn't come for this. We came to have freedom for our families. I have animals? I have five kids. I will leave, because I'm not gonna put up with this. I will go somewhere else. And I see that it's hitting Georgia, Kentucky. Here? What the heck? Do you have family? Would you like this thing to affect your kids and your animals? I have a rooster, a house rooster, okay? And he lives with me in my house, and he shakes his head when I speak above a whisper. He will freak out. These are my chickens. I supply eggs to my neighbors. This is just crazy. I would have never thought that I would have come here, this state of freedom, to encounter nonsense like this. We're here for freedom, and we will fight for freedom.
Thank you.
Rachel Hawley Garland Acres. I just wanna say that Tilford, as small as they are, they fought it, and they won. So, what, are they smarter than you all, that you can't figure out how to stop this? Nobody wants it. If it's not gonna work in a county setting, it's not gonna work in a city, which makes me wonder, are you all getting some kinda money off this, because nobody else is gonna benefit from it?
Hi, my name is Kasslyn Wyatt. I live off Fair Lawn Drive. This proposal is weak. 200 feet is my backyard. If you think I can't hear my neighbor, you heard what it sounded like. No, absolutely not. That will drive everybody insane, and I already have health problems. I have migraines. And our neighbors have health problems too. They come first. It is not money, it is not Bitcoin, which nobody benefits from. Scammers use that to take care of the elder, to try to take advantage of the poor and elderly, and I work in fraud. I see that every day. It's wrong. It's wrong to our animals, it's wrong to the people, and I don't care if Bright Ridge gets money, it's supposed to be a nonprofit. They're profiting off it, that goes against it, and they should, and 200, 200 feet is nothing. I need you to understand that is the distance between me and the back of the room. And I'm sure y'all can hear me? I'm not speaking at 70 decibels, am I? I'm not. So, this is weak, and you need at least have thousands, thousands, or in an industrial park like this, where there's, where there's industries that aren't in residential neighborhoods, and it's for a good reason. That's all, I didn't need three minutes.
The proposal, for some odd strange reason, seems to increase the decibels at night. Nighttime is where we get our rest. Nighttime is where we survive and our bodies heal. I don't quite understand how all of these decibels are rated from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM at a higher rating. That makes zero sense, zero logic, and it is anti-health.
Thank you.
Can you all, when you're talking, or I don't know how this works, but please talk about, or that gentleman over there, can discuss the mitigation for the air emissions? Because no one, we've talked about sound, and I totally understand, but please, could we also address the air emissions? Thank you.
I really like to stay around this neighborhood. I'd lived in Florida for a long time and, and went to college and did my work, 45 years working in the medical, and seeing what happens to people with a lot of things that they shouldn't be doing. But the one thing that I got taught a long time ago was, was bring me up and see me exactly what it is. I've been to two of these facilities. No birds, cattle dying, the, just the blood of time, of area, of everything over there. It stunk. And so I don't want to live in that kind of center. You know, I, I lived my life to give people health, not a disaster. All I say to you is, please, understand that. Go there, watch it, see what it has hearing in the early time of the morning. See the birds dead. This is what you're going to be dealing with. I pray that you understand.
Sir, 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 sir. Can you state your name, please?
Donald Minor, M-I-N-O-R.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name's Ciara Gilmer. I just wanted to come and present you with this award for exceptionally avoiding accountability in the Sean Williams case, and Ms. Kathy Ball for 300-plus houses. Thank you so much.
I'm Robyn Phillips, and I spoke earlier, and I think I spoke loud enough for all of you all to hear the real truth. I have never in my life been vocal to this point, ever. Now, I talk loud. My husband over here says I'm hard of hearing, but tonight I'm talking extra loud, because each and every one of us have been devoting hours of our life that we can never get back researching reputable sites. And I know you're not allowed to answer me, which is so bogus, because after all, we, the public, elected each and every one of you. So I think you all should be able to answer me and everyone else tonight, rather than putting it off, clamorating in the back as to what you're going to say, and then come out and tell us all what you want us to hear, because that's how we all feel. I'm not a person full of hate. I love this community. I was born and raised here, lived away for many years, not by my choice, but returned to Johnson City because I thought it was God's country. That's why these people are standing up from Florida, from California, and from everywhere, because you all know it. You have enough sense to know the whole area is filling up with people coming here because of the disastrous areas of other parts of the country. That's the reason 400-plus houses are being built in gray. But yet, you're wanting to destroy everything for everyone. And you know what? You just want to put a little Band-Aid on it all by saying big words that most people don't even use every day, because you know what? You can't tell it to us straight. And if you would tell it to us straight, maybe we would all not be in the uproar that we are tonight. My husband has worked his butt off from the time he was a little boy, and then he worked at Eastman Chemical Company for 43 years. He just retired. He has had nine surgeries in three and a half years, and God has let him live. God dropped this in my lap. I don't know why, but he had a purpose. That's the reason I'm standing up here tonight for the second time, to not just ask you, but to beg you each to have a conscience about what's right for all of Johnson City, and not just look out for where you live, for Bright Ridge, and for money. Because you know what? Bright Ridge did not have to do the huge price increase like each and every one of you want to say that this will offset Bitcoin mining. We existed before Bitcoin mining, and we can exist after.
Good job.
Hi, Ann Kirkpatrick. Yeah, I just want to say, like, we're talking about these amendments, and this decibel and that decibel, and trying to tweak this amendment so that, you know, this will all supposedly be okay, but there's no way to put in something like this without it making noise that's too loud, no matter what decibel you have down on paper. It's just not possible to put one of these in where the people live and have the noise not bother people. It doesn't matter what research and what number you put down on that amendment, it's just not possible. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I just have one more thing. Leah Russell.
Yes, ma'am.
You know that noise that just happened? The microphone? They all turned and hurt. You like that noise? You all turned and were like, "Turn it off," right? That's what you were thinking? Well, you expect us in this community to have noise all the time? What the heck? But you're not okay with that? I'm just saying, there's something wrong there, to not like something like, so... What was it, five seconds? And yet you want us to do this for 24 hours a day? Just something to think about.
Thank you.
I live in Martindale Estates. Thank you for letting us give our input tonight. I wasn't going to speak, but just want to speak to a couple of things. We saw that Bright Ridge, in their statement on Tuesday, put a moratorium on entertaining proposals for new data center projects in their service area. And we're concerned, we don't know what a moratorium means. I mean, it says it's a temporary postponement of something, I think is the definition. So we're concerned, well, this may come next month. It may come back up, you know, they say they're going to hold off on it, so we're not sure. We're concerned about that, the uncertainty there. They also said that they're fully, Bright Ridge in their statement, are fully aware of the many benefits of next-generation data centers could bring to the communities we serve. Well, I would like to ask the question, what are the benefits to the communities that they serve? I really am interested in that. I haven't, in my research, found many benefits. Now, if there are some, I don't know all about the electrical, if Bitcoin, a data center would come in here. My understanding is it would use a considerable amount of electricity, and we are told by some of you commissioners that that would not bring our electric bills up. But I'm pretty simple-minded, I guess. I feel like when something goes, the supply of something goes up, with the demand of it goes up, it may affect us negatively with our electric bills, too, and when they, they could go up as well. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
You're fine.
But we're concerned, I'm concerned, about not only the noise and the effects to our lives, but I live less than a mile away from where this property is on Innovation Drive. I'm concerned, I won't be able to sell my home if I decide to, you know, try to move somewhere else. My property value, I'm concerned, is going to decrease significantly. Nobody's going to want to live near this place with all the health concerns and the noise. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about my electricity and my water bill going up significantly. Looking online, I saw places in Texas and Georgia where residents were interviewed, and their electric bill went up somewhere, anywhere from 25 to 50% right away. So, so these are my concerns, and I just wanted to mention those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ellen Jaeger. I actually live in Kingsport, but I love Buffalo Mountain. I love this area. I don't know much about Bitcoin-ing, but I wonder why it's been outlawed in so many countries? There's no financial value, it's bad for the environment, and why are we so behind the facts, you know?
Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I live in Martindale Estates. My name is Peggy Dupras, and we've lived there for about six years. And this area is a beautiful area, and to volunteer to build a super fund environmental issue in the neighborhood by putting a Bitcoin facility in it is not good for the community, and I don't think it's a wise choice for a council to make. Can you spell your last name? D-U-P-R-A-S.
Thank you.
I came here from Europe. I came to the United States 1960, and 62 I joined the army. And we were lied to about Agent Orange. It won't hurt you. Don't worry about it. Well, we, look how many soldiers are affected by it. And now you're coming here with Bitcoin? It's even worse than Agent Orange ever going to be. Think about it. Look at the VAs. Look how many soldiers are messed up by this stuff. Now we're going to do it to the rest of the people? I'm sorry.
Any others? Yeah, come on.
My name is Tracy Teal, T-E-A-L. This is, I confess my ignorance about this whole matter, but I did want to know after the gentleman gave all the information about the zoning and so forth, it made it sound as if this particular issue about Bitcoin was integrated so with the zoning decisions that had to be made. And my, my question is simply, cannot this issue be divorced from the consideration of the... Well, no, my question was simply, because of the discussions about the zoning issues and so forth, it seems to be that this issue about Bitcoin is integral to everything you've been talking about with the zoning. My question for the Commission is simply, is it impossible to break out this issue about the Bitcoin and address it, and allow the other things as it relates to the zoning and the designations, and the changing of the definitions, et cetera, et cetera, to go forward on its own? Are they one and the same? I have heard it said that, hey, we are legally bound to do X. I don't know what the legal requirements of you are, but my point would simply be is, is it a matter that they must all go forward together? Or is it possible for you, as the Commission, to take some portion, and you've seen evidence of the public sentiment about it, and perhaps take a more judicious view and address it separately, and that sort of thing, and allow the other items to go forward?
Thank you, Mr. Teal.
The limitations are determined such that if I leave, everyone's mic on, we're inevitably going to have feedback.
Okay, I'm going to close public hearing. Last chance. Okay.
Mayor, may I speak?
Yeah.
All right. So I wasn't here two weeks ago for the first reading, so I didn't get a chance to speak. But for those who don't know, I am a physician. I'm a sports medicine physician. I've been here for 33 years. I've been the team doctor for Science Hill. I've been for ETSU, for numerous other teams here, and my big thing is prevention of injury. And if they do get hurt, then I try and make them better as soon as I can. That's number one on my list, except I'm a Christian first, I'm a husband second, I'm a father third, and then I'm a physician after that. So if you think we don't care, you're not listening to us, you're listening to other people, because I can't speak for everybody, but I care about Johnson City. I moved here 33 years ago and have stayed here because I like Johnson City. I raised four children, adopted one here. So if you think I don't care, you don't know me. Next, if nothing is done, they can put one of these in 15 different areas in Johnson City the way it is now, so we have to do something about it. That's according to our charter.
I'm...
We'll have a lot of questions. Let's, we listened and...
And there's a couple of things I want to address. You said we don't answer questions. I listened for a long time, and I understand. I am understanding a lot of what you talked about. I mean, pretty much 100% of what you talked about. I do this job because I care about Johnson City. I do not have to do this. I've run three times to try and make Johnson City better, so my kids have a place to come back to. I would like them to come back here and live. I don't want them to come back and have this in our backyard. I don't want to stay here if it's in my backyard, which is in your backyard also. So I do this because I care about Johnson City and the people who live here, and that's everybody. That's not the people who live on one side of town or the other. There's no other reason for me to do it except to make Johnson City better. So that's just where I am. So here, I am for the strongest possible wording that will keep data centers from wanting to come to Johnson City. Whatever we can do, if we have to scrap this and start all over again, whatever we can do the most of to make them not want to come to Johnson City. whatever we can do the most of to make them not want to come to Johnson City. I think the only person or people that it helps are the owners of the people doing the mining and nobody else. I mean, I might invest in Bitcoin, but I'm not investing in the company that comes to Johnson City and do it. I don't really want them anywhere, but I don't own any Bitcoin, just to let you know. And, and I'm a physician and it's not that, I just don't want to do that right now. So anyway, if you think all of us don't care, you're not listening to us either. This is something we need to do to keep this from being here. Like I said, I wasn't here two weeks ago to speak, so I'm thinking that. But I would, we got to do whatever we can to make them not want to come to Johnson City. That's all I got.
So, so if I could, I'm sorry, do you want to go?
I'd like to speak too, to give a little.
Are you getting ready to?
So I'm new to this, and I'm doing this because I love Johnson City. And my love for Johnson City starts, my, my granddad was an orphan from Bula Dean and worked his whole life to buy almost all this land around where you guys are talking about. We're representing the whole city also, though. I can't just represent where I grew up. Three of you guys talked, you know, two of you live in the house that my father built and I grew up in, that is probably the closest to this property. And so I have a really hard time just, you know, I, we love it here. This is not, we do this as largely volunteer work. There's, it's a lot of time. We get paid $100 a month. It is not for the money. And so when you talk about the money, it is because we love this town. And it, it is, there's a lot to chew on with this subject because it's not just Bitcoin. There are other coins, talking about carving out for Bitcoin. We've got to look at this to figure out what technology can come down the road. The reason we're even here is because I think one of the other commissioners brought up a while ago, hey, we need to get ahead of this, and it takes time. And I think I want to look at this as like, do we need to get some teeth in something quickly as we get some other information and make sure our code works? And, and definitions are very, very important. The reason we're talking about this is because our definition for computer-based businesses now can apply to something that it wasn't intended to when the code was written, that, that definition was written, which could have been 10 years ago, 20 years ago. But things change. And I just, when, when my grandfather got that land, there was no train tracks. He had no idea the railroad was going to come right through there. There's a big lake at the bottom of Catbird Creek. It's not there anymore. There's a big cave. And something he worked his whole life for changed in a heartbeat, right? I mean, I, and I also love our city. The reason I wanted to do this is because I don't feel like our city's national politics. We are local. We're here because we care. Everybody up here, no matter what you think, is here because we care. This is a lot of time, and we listen to all of it. We answer a lot of phone calls. This is not something that we take lightly by any means. But we've got to listen to the whole city. We've got to make sure what we choose right now will protect the whole city, not just where the land I grew up in, that defined my whole life and why I love it here, why I live here. And so I, I, I just say that as you hear us deliberate, because there is a process. And that is why it is hard to not be able to respond. We write down your questions, so we make sure we can, I want to ask so that you can hear some responses. But it's, it, we have a great city. And I don't, there's not been this much tension very often that I've seen for a variety of reasons. And I just hope you guys listen to us deliberate, know that we care, and we're trying to find our best way forward.
So I raised this concern about two years ago. It was 2023, and it was in the wake of some of what was happening then in Telford. And the concern that I had was that we essentially have two tools as a city when it comes to enforcing some sort of compliance around a business like this that's disruptive and creates a nuisance. And those are land use, that's zoning. And then various nuisance ordinances, that's our noise ordinance. Those are the two tools we have. And what happened in the county that kind of got away from them is what we're trying to avoid happening here. And that's waiting till they come to establish terms of engagement around the discussion or fight that might ensue. And so I think what we're trying to do is eliminate some ambiguity that could exist in our code by its silence, because 50 years ago, when that code was drafted, nobody knew what a data center or Bitcoin was. And I think the language around the data center is important because Bitcoin is obnoxious based on every reading you have. I mean, if, you know, you see these communities in Arkansas, you all talked about Georgia. I understand that. I understood that in 2023 when I said we need to wrap our arms around this and understand what we're doing. Then concurrent with that came this unfortunate confluence, which is Bright Ridge and a specific property and a specific proposal. And it creates the impression that they're in some way related. In, in my view, they are not, just to be clear. What I would like to see us deal with is the zoning, to put some meaningful restrictions around it, and then the noise ordinance. And, and I've had some conversations. Sylvan alluded to us having talked. And, and my concern around a noise ordinance isn't just decibels. I mean, you know, right now, I think our noise ordinance is about how high the volume is, right? And, and that, that's part of the puzzle, but I don't think that's all of the puzzle. And so that's why the language of like acoustic engineer, I didn't even know that was a thing. But, you know, beginning to figure out how you measure that and how you put, if, if a subdivision comes to town, or developer comes to town and wants to build a subdivision, we ask them to do an impact or a traffic study. So before they ever put the first shovel in the dirt, we're looking at their plat, we're looking at the number of houses, we're looking at how it's going to interact with the traffic on the other streets, and we're trying to figure out what that impact is going to be. We don't have a mechanism for that right now around questions of noise or vibration or acoustic consequence or implication. I don't know what words to use. And that's the second part of this conversation. So, so the first thing I want to say is there is nothing about our code that's written today that prevents this from happening tomorrow. Well, correct, the, the noise, but that doesn't prevent it from coming. It just gives us something to raise issue with them, okay? And so, and the noise ordinance probably needs to be enhanced to reflect the consequences of what we're talking about. The other thing that concerns me about data centers is this is all kind of about Bitcoin. But artificial intelligence has the potential to require a tremendous amount of churn out of servers. And I don't think any of us understand what that's going to look like in two, three, or five years. And, and so we're trying to get to the point where we have as many tools in our toolbox when it comes to putting meaningful boundaries around this. And, and I recognize, I mean, you know, people, I've heard people, where, you know, about your house? And where do you live? I have a power substation at the end of my street. You know, Interstate 26 is two houses away from my backyard. I understand ambient noise. So like, I'm not, I'm not unsympathetic, okay? In fact, quite the contrary. What, what I would like to see, there have been some suggestions that I found kind of compelling, but unfortunately, they don't have a way to apply under Tennessee law. So for example, I'd love to be able to tell somebody who's coming to town with Bitcoin, well, yeah, you can come, but you got to give us 25 cents of every dollar, 5 cents of every dollar of your profit. Can't, can't, I mean, I don't know how we can do that, okay? And, and, okay. So, so there are, there are, but we cannot, so the, the core issue, though, is we can't make our zoning code about a specific type of business. It's about a cat-specific type of use. And that's what we're trying to get to, is to paint this issue into a corner so that the people who might want to do this in or to Johnson City don't have a lot of room to move and create the kind of issues we're trying to avoid. So, well, that's what we're trying to do, okay? And so, so that, that, that's what this ordinance is first starting to do. It's, the first question is to take 14 or 13 zones off the table. The next question, so then it's now it can only happen in I-2. And I realize if you live adjacent to I-2, that's of real concern. And I'm not, I'm not unsympathetic to that. The, the second part of it is the noise piece. Now, I've heard the language of moratorium. And moratorium can kind of be a word, and moratorium can be an actual legal thing. So like, for example, in the last year or two, I think it was Williamson County had a moratorium on residential development because they couldn't build roads and sewer plants and schools. Is it Williamson County or Wilson? It's one of the Nashville counties. It couldn't build the infrastructure fast enough. So they had a moratorium where you couldn't build any new houses. Now, that wasn't in perpetuity. That wasn't a moratorium for affinity, infinity. That was a moratorium for a date-specific time period so that the local jurisdiction could catch up on some of that infrastructure. And then, and then it, the moratorium was lifted, okay? And so one of the questions I would, I guess, have for council is if we approve this, the, the thing that gives me pause about adding this language, though it is not permissive, it is just descriptive, adding this language to I-2 is creating a temporary window while the noise ordinance is being worked out. And so, Mr. Seeley, can you speak to, Mr. Seeley's the city attorney. As we think about a moratorium as it would apply to future development, can you talk through the opportunities and limitations and what, talk about a moratorium a little bit?
The commission wanted to consider a moratorium. Again, in this situation, it has to be limited. As you said, it has to be limited in time, so it can't go on forever. It would need to be limited for a period, six months to a year. And it can't address just one specific business. So again, you could do a moratorium that again does not allow any business to apply for a building permit in the I-2 zone. So I think with those two limitations, you could pass a moratorium and give the city a little bit more time to get expert opinion. And I think the RFQ for the noise ordinance from the experts, I think Penn State is where the city was looking at, that would give you time to get the noise ordinance in place and put a stop to any businesses locating in an I-2 for that period of time.
And a moratorium would be a result of a commission passed resolution or, or, what would enact a moratorium?
I think it would be a resolution that this commission could consider.
Okay. And so the moratorium would say effectively what? For a period of this defined period of time, nothing can be built in an I-2?
Yes, sir. It would, it would limit, there could be no businesses, because again, that's one of the things, it just has to be narrowly tailored. It can't just do away or ban Bitcoin from coming in an I-2. It'd have to do all businesses for that period of time. And I think we would look to, you know, what the timeframe we believe it's going to take to get that expert opinion, you know, off, from the RFQ so that we have that information and what that would look like. So maybe a six-month to 12 months.
So that we could get the RFQ, get the results, act on code, and have it enforced?
Enact the noise ordinance, and then that would be in place. And it would have those protections that have been discussed.
And if you're an existing business in I-2 and you need to do an expansion, pull a permit?
Shouldn't affect the existing businesses. This would just apply to businesses that were coming to an I-2.
Thank you. So I remain supportive of defining in the code uses that the code never envisioned because it puts boundaries. It does not eliminate all of the concerns, and I get that. I am also very interested in the moratorium, partly because I think that would give us time to better understand the acoustic consequences. I'm still trying to find the word I like, what the noise or acoustic consequences are. And I'll tell you, if you're trying to figure out like driving incentives, like, I don't know, I don't know what the city would get out of Bitcoin. Like, so if you're, if you're trying to figure out, oh, there's some end game where the city commission profits or the city profit, I, I have, I'm maybe not smart enough. I haven't figured out what the end game there would be. But I do know this, if you take all development in I-2 off the table, that starts to pinch. And that keeps an incentive on the table to get the issues around Bitcoin and data centers. And I think data centers are a bigger concern than Bitcoin, because I think two, three, four years from now, artificial intelligence is the bigger question than whatever Bitcoin is. I've probably said too much, so I will stop.
Well, just back on that. So, you know, a moratorium type would be more of a resolution. Or this is an ordinance. We got one more reading of the ordinance in two weeks. But, and a resolution still separate from.
But I will tell you this, absent that kind of moratorium resolution, I wouldn't personally be comfortable voting for this on third reading because I want to make sure we close the back door before we chase somebody through the house.
So on, on a, on a next meeting with agenda items, I mean, the resolutions are a separate section than your ordinances. And so what comes first? I sure wouldn't want to put a moratorium on I-2 with, I mean, is there a way to? I mean, because we can't vote on them simultaneously.
Well, they, you could vote on the moratorium at the next meeting. Again, we would need to do the public notice and have that placed on the agenda. But again, what you're considering tonight is really a limitation of where, you know, these different businesses can go. So again, that could be considered at the same time if, once, if we got the timeframe that we know that we should be able to get the information back. Now, the ordinance, it could be considered potentially, the moratorium, at the next meeting when you're having the, the third reading of this ordinance.
Okay.
While you're, Mr. Seeley, one of the residents asked about air emissions. Is that something, and you may not know off the top of your head, but is that something that could be regulated by a city code or ordinance?
I think it is, and I think that's something that we could look at. And I think Mr. Tribbit was already, I think we're taking some notes on that and looking to see, you know, who can we reach out to that has some expertise in that area?
So maybe that's included as part of the reason for the moratorium if this passes on.
Could be, yes.
Well.
Could you say there's a moratorium on energy-intensive digital operations?
Well, actually, the moratorium's going to be on anything in I-2. It's pretty broad.
It's going to be a blanket on anything until you can figure out noise ordinance and/or error.
Yeah, well, really, right. I mean, that's going to be the stated purpose is, I mean, it's going to depend on how the resolution is written. Right now, as I expressed it, my initial thought was around the sound consequences, but I would be agreeable to the, the other, the other impacts.
Well, I mean, and I guess what, we can make a motion, you know, this has to go to a third reading. You know, I, I would want to keep as much teeth as we can moving forward. So I'd like to make a, a motion to pass it. I would also really hope that we could get a resolution on the agenda. Resolutions don't allow public hearing, but they can sign up for public comment prior to.
Well, and I, to your point, I think the real work around further defining it is going to be those things that go into those nuisance ordinances, noise and whatever the other is, between now and lifting the moratorium. Is that fair, Mr. Seeley? I mean, that's, okay.
And I've got one more question. If, if the moratorium, you know, staff needs to come with kind of a recommendation for us, but if it, if it started with six months, because I don't want to inhibit another I-2 or some other things that might be in progress. And we didn't feel, five months into this, we were getting good enough response on sound studies, acoustics, vibrations, air emissions. Can it be extended a reasonable amount of time?
I think the moratorium could be extended, or it could be shortened, depending on if we get the information back sooner. So I think the commission could make that decision as we get into it, whether they'd want to extend it or shorten it.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think at the end of the day, my goal is to signal to anybody who's thinking about this kind of business and thinking about Johnson City, we're not going to make it easy. And so, and that's, that's been the motivation since 2023, when we first started that conversation. So I would second Commissioner Cox's motion with the caveat, I'd like to see a resolution next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to say something. If you've ever watched our commission.
If you've ever watched our commission meetings before, I'm the one that usually talks most. But thank you. I mean, this has been a lively conversation, and thank you for being here. I've been, I've served for many, many years, and this is the most we've ever had for any kind of public input or hearing on any topic that we've had. And we thank you for the information you've presented. I can look over at Commissioner Wise's notes that he's been taking, and there are many as well as mine, and so you've made some good points. It does hurt a little bit, though, when you think we are profiting from things like this. It's furthest from the truth. You know, when the thing went down, I guess, in the county, and this is what got us talking about it, because the county didn't have any kind of zoning for a Bitcoin mine. And so they just assigned a zoning, A3. They came up with that, the planning staff came up with A3 zoning. And then the difference in what's down in Limestone versus the restrictions that we're setting here through this ordinance is they're in individual shipping containers cooled by fans. And the restrictions we put in place here is they have to be in a building like this. And so that's going to make it more expensive for them to even come and begin to build out their, their plants. So anything internal, and that's, that has to do with any kind of data center, and we're going to have others, you've heard us talk about this, there's no, no doubt that it's going to happen. And so we have to put it so that it looks like any other kind of factory and not portable sitting out in lots with gravel spread around them and fans that are trying to cool them. So it was our best intentions to get ahead of this, so what happened in the county couldn't happen here. So I'm, I'm, I'm very much on board with the conversation that's going on here. I think we need to, to make a call to, so that some of the other things that have been brought up here, some of the other environmental issues that have been brought up here, we have time to really get into those, to get, now, a lot of things have been said that, you know, we've got to have the data behind there to make sure that those things are valid, okay? So thank you all again for coming, and let's move forward. We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Well, I'd just say, you know, this is how local government works. I mean, you know, we put something out, we get feedback, and, and, you know, this text amendment, while some may not agree that certain parts of it are strong enough, something's better than nothing at the front. And then what, as you've heard from the commission, we've heard about, you know, things that you all are interested in as being stronger in, in nature within the text amendment. And so those things can happen. I mean, the fact that we're doing, what, what we're doing right now is changing the text of the zoning code. It can continue to change. But right now, the fears of some, I've heard tonight, and Mr. Bernie said in our meeting a couple of weeks, or earlier this week, is that Bright Ridge's moratorium does not have a date. And so if we deny this tonight, they could take their moratorium off tomorrow and set up shop or work with the.
And the other thing their moratorium doesn't say is that if somebody came to town and wanted to buy power from them, they wouldn't sell it to them. I mean, it just says they're not actively recruiting somebody, and so I don't think the, the potential risk, and this is not impugning the motives of Bright Ridge, but if anybody were to come to town and say, I want to buy a half a million dollars worth of power, Bright Ridge would probably sell it to them. And so let's box it in.
And now, I don't say that, I, I don't think Bright Ridge is going to drop the moratorium tomorrow, but there's concern within the community, and we need to respect that.
And we don't want to stop. There's other land in town, not just the parcel that is of concern, that any company could come and buy tomorrow, and the developer could hook it up to the grid. You just have to have a lot of power. So, and to echo how government works, I'm new, I'm still learning. This is local, it's different than everything we see on TV. We, we, staff gives us an agenda with recommendations. We're the conduit for the community to interpret what the professional staff is recommending. It doesn't mean we're building this agenda, and these aren't necessarily our recommendations. And so if people come and communicate, I mean, it'd be great if it was this full all the time. There's a lot of good stuff that happens here, too, that the community could hear about. I mean, ETSU ran Ash Street Courthouse, it's a great thing to understand. And so we need good, respectful conversations to hear what you guys want, so then we can interpret the recommendations the city's staff's making. But anyways, we do have a vote.
Well, and if y'all think of anything else that you want to share, you know.
We have a YouTube channel.
Forty to fifty people sometimes watch the meetings. Over the course, forty to fifty people over the course of a month will watch our meeting.
Well, they can kind of help tell us, I mean, even as far as, you know, this started because Joe wanted to get ahead of it and said, staff bring us, you know, we're not professional staff. That, you know, Johnson City, the way it governs, it's a weak mayor system, so instead of having a mayor that runs the city, there are five commissioners that hire.
And a weak mayor.
And a little mayor. And so the five commissioners, you know, and this started back in the early, I mean, the late 1800s, five commissioners hire professional staff, because it was just a bunch of neighbors that got together and said, we need to organize, and this is the way our charter's set up. And so when you come to live in Johnson City, you don't have a, a mayor, you have a chairman of a board of directors that, that have, that we're, have city staff, and the staff are the professionals, and we're a conduit for the community to get to them. And when the staff says 200 feet, you know, we, we have to do our best to interpret that as far as the distance. Is that enough? You know, if the community comes and has, hey, it might need to be a little farther, we rely on a council, say what's appropriate, what's legal, what can we do, not get ourselves in trouble? And so a dialogue, it, you know, the process is tough to not go back and forth, but we hear what you say and can take it down. We can follow up outside of this in a professional setting, and it, it's not coming, just, it's important to know it's not coming from, we're getting recommendations, and, and we're doing our best to figure out if that's right for our community.
And if you think of anything between now and, well, the whole time that we're considering these matters, you know, feel free to share it with us. Commission@johnsoncitytn.org is probably the easiest way to remember or hit all of us instead of, I mean, we've got individual email, but that gets us all.
Yeah.
But we do have a motion and a second.
Can the motion be read again?
I just, I made a motion to approve the text amendment.
And then I seconded it.
But I would hope to see.
And then I made a strong pronouncement seeking a resolution that has no real binding consequence, but I'm not voting for this on third reading without the resolution.
Yeah.
Ms. Laus.
Can I ask a question? Is there any light pollution from these things?
It would be inside of a building.
Yeah.
They don't have lights on the outside?
Well, and I do, our, we do.
We have light ordinances.
We, we do have light restrictions within the zoning code that do not allow light to go past property lines.
And that affects.
And they have to submit a photometric plan during site plan development.
Yeah, most all commercial development requires that.
Yep. Okay.
Does the June 16th meeting, I mean, June 16th meeting also have six, also here?
Yeah, our meetings are always the first and third meeting, first and third Thursday.
Well, and I would say that's a great question. You know, there's, at some point in the next month or so, you know, the, they'll be back at City Hall.
Well, that's true. Been renovating, so when that gets done, we'll go back to our usual place to meet.
Yeah, which is much more convenient, I feel like.
But, but right now, I would assume that we're going to be here for the next, at least, need or two or three.
It's going to be six o'clock.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Is this the only place that we can learn this stuff? Because I don't watch TV, and my neighbor came and told me this, and this was, I was not expecting this. And so, I mean, I'm planning on coming to these commission meetings because.
Well, so the city website has that calendar on it. It also, the week before, or the, the Monday of the week of the meeting.
The agenda's posted.
So the whole agenda, Tuesday, it's posted, so you could also find the agenda packet there, and the first few pages are the most important, and then the back pages are the supplements.
And also, you know, I, I don't usually have so much dialogue, sorry, especially when there's a motion and a second, but the, the, I, there's been a lot of comments I've heard lately of just not hearing what's going to be out there. I think the press used to be very involved when, you know, Johnson City Press was downtown, and it was just part of culture. And news is not the same as it used to be. And so now I think for local news, you got to seek it out yourself a little bit, sadly, I think. I mean, we still have some great news outlets, I'm not saying that. I just mean, when it comes to really, really hyper-local stuff, you know, the city website has a ton of valuable information, truly. I mean, it, it's bigger than it looks. There's a lot of little nooks and crannies. I think for a city our size, with the amount of information, I mean, zoning, you know, even development services, water lines, sewer lines, you can actually go light, have maps and see it all, so it's pretty impressive. Sorry.
I understand why you guys kind of, I feel like sitting here, you guys aren't used to kind of getting harsh feedback a little bit. I mean, I come from Kansas City, Missouri. I'm new to Johnson City, and I really haven't been impressed with you guys very much, just from some stuff that I've seen as a new stuff that I've been involved in. So I have trust issues, and I have to gain that trust, okay? So, I mean, these people to me, they're, they just want you guys to listen, and I feel like sometimes you guys don't listen about other issues. So I have a little bit of trust issue, so I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Yes, one last question.
So I'm kind of a simple guy. I mean, if it doesn't bite or kick, I can't fix it. If it does, I can. But does the city have anything, any business that they can prohibit at this point?
No.
Not, not a topless place, nothing like that?
Tapas.
Whatever. I mean, I'm just thinking.
I know, an adult-oriented establishment is permissible in the city limits. It's very, very, very restricted, a model I would like to replicate for Bitcoin.
Right, that's my point.
Illegal businesses are prohibited. Yeah, you can't sell cocaine in Johnson City.
Oh, not bad, but, you know, if you could, if there were something, that would sure make it simple.
And I think Mr. Bernie mentioned there is something at the state level that's been tabled, but.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner, the next order of business is item 7.4, an ordinance assigning planned community business district to approximately 3.9 acres located at 5840 Bobby Hicks Highway.
Yeah, let's have a 10-minute recess.
It's a good idea.
Hold that thought.
Hold that thought. I will bring the meeting back to order after the recess. Ms. Ball, what's next on our agenda?
The next item on the agenda is item 7.4, ordinance 4915. This is the second reading. It is an ordinance assigning planned community development district located at 5840 Bobby Hicks Highway.
Hi.
Good evening, Commissioners. Callie McGrew with Planning and Development Services. This is a voluntary annexation request of 3.9 acres along the Bobby Hicks Highway for a DMV. There have been no changes in the zoning assignment. However, we do have new information as far as the capital costs go. So I want to bring up water and sewer to speak to those, if that's okay?
Please.
Did you want me to touch on any of this? No? Okay.
Unless it's changed.
No, it hasn't.
And this is a vote just for the zoning, right?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes, sir. Tom Witherspoon, Director of Water Service Services. A little bit of clarity on the cost estimate and the extension that was given to plan and earlier. So we're going to be coming, if, if we serve the property, we're going to be coming from the airport side of a low-lying area where there's a sewer interceptor at. To get to the property is about 740 feet of line, and that's where the $291,000 came from. Mr. McMillan went back and researched some more, and beside that tract is a two-acre tract that is already inside the city. It's currently vacant, but to, and, and the plan of services for that tract when it was annexed in 2012 basically said, "City will extend sewer services to that tract whenever it's built on." It hasn't built, been built on, so we hadn't extended. So what does that mean? It means really what should be allocated for this tract that's in consideration, that hadn't, that there is no commitment to, is about 180 feet of pipe, about $72,000. So that's the difference in those numbers. So we're already on the hook for $219,000 once someone builds on the tract that's inside the city.
That sounds great. Well, not great. That's a lot of clarity. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, well.
No, there's no public hearing on annexation.
This is the zoning.
Motion to approve or second, whatever you're looking for.
Did you motion?
Okay, so you got a second, Joe.
Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Next item of business is item 7.5, ordinance number 4916-25. This is the second reading and public hearing. It's an ordinance to amend Title VIII, Chapters 1 and 2 of the Code of the City of Johnson City.
Ms. Bell?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is the second reading, and I am going to go through one portion, trying to focus on really getting that small icon clicked. We have changed one small portion in that, well, as we talked about, we're in Title VIII, and we have added some expansion language to include the lakefront at Wing Deer and the Langston Building. There is an additional change from the last reading, just to make the language regarding brown bagging more consistent with the rest of the changes that we've already made. We noticed one part where we had not included that lakefront and Langston Building, and so it's been brought up to speak with the rest of the changes. Otherwise, there are no, no further changes to that.
Is this, and there is a public hearing on this?
Correct.
I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please come forward. Not seeing any. I will close the public hearing. Any comments, questions, or entertain a motion?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Next item is item 7.6, ordinance 4917-25. This is the second reading and public hearing for an ordinance to amend Title 20, Chapter 4 of the Code of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee.
And there have been no changes to this ordinance. It is just bringing it up to speed with the changes to Title VIII, and it is referencing Title, or, I'm sorry, section 102 instead of 101, because that was the definition section. But this is also up for a public hearing.
And, and this one is regarding?
So Title 20 is, it's Parks and Rec, and where we're talking about having these allowances to allow beer sale, or beer at special events in parks, it's just taking those portions that are dealing with the parks and make sure it references back to the correct sections.
Okay. Questions or a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, this one, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please come forward. Not seeing any. I will close the public, public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second. Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Ms. Brock.
Commissioner Brock?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm distracting her.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
The next item is, as third readings for ordinance number 4911-23. This is the third and final reading for an ordinance to amend 4662-18, an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances to conflict, that conflict here with, therewith, and amend thereof for permits, tapping fees, and fair user charges system of billing for the use of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee water system.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Mr. McMillan's up to help a technology-challenged director. This ordinance provides multi-year funding for capital improvements, and specific, for this ordinance is the potable water system. These were presented to the board by the water sewer staff and our rate consultant, Rafatellus, on January 23rd, 2025. And again, it affects user fees over multiple years, four years, and also adjustments to tap fees. Primary reason is for funding of critical infrastructure projects on the water system that provide reliability, capacity, redundancy, and regulatory compliance. Master plans, City Commission was actively involved in hearing about those in the last 18 months. And thank you for your patience and attention and questions regarding those. In January, again, the City Commission heard from Rafatellus about how to fund those necessary improvements and minimize the impact to customers. Just as a note for the public that's watching tonight, since the 1980s, systems like ours are funded through local user rates. There is not a significant federal or state share. And again, our department, like most municipal or all municipal service providers, we're set up as an enterprise fund. So the support for capital and operations comes strictly from the user rates and not from tax revenues. The amount of the adjustments depended on the customer class and location, somewhere between $2 to $5 per month, or 3.75 to about 5.75, again, depending on customer class. We still remain very similar to other utilities of, of our size. And this is the process we've used for the last 20 years, and it's been accepted by our customers. The results of those improvements, and as we said previously, the Hurricane Helene event to where we were able to provide water during the entire event was a result of previous investments by the City Commission. The support for the fire department with water system and the ISO rating was a support as a result of previous investments for replacement of line improvements to the system. And that is, oh, briefly, Kevin, can you advance the slide, please? On the water, it's about eight debt-funded projects totaling $13 million, and also increases in our cash-funded capital to continue to replace lines and overcome some of the problems with, that we've had with inflation. Projects include new storage tanks, transmission lines, pumping station upgrades, and upgrades to technology at our water plants to make it more defensible against cyber attacks. In accordance with various capital plans and updates presented by the Board of Commissioners in the fall of 2024 and by Rafatellus, for capital funding plan in January 2025, we recommend approval.
Commissioner?
I'd make a motion to approve and just, again, reiterate, our water and sewer department function as an enterprise fund. For those who are watching at home, that means dollars in and dollars out need to equal. Tax dollars don't fund our water system. Rates fund our water system. And water systems are an incredibly capital-intensive enterprise, and you don't have to look very far from Johnson City to see water systems that have kicked the can of capital expense down the road for a short-term reprieve from the investment. And then eventually they lose control of their system because they don't have the dollars to fund the necessary capital, and then they start to have issues with EPA and TDEC and all the people who have issues with water and sewer. And so Tom and John and that entire department deserves a great deal of credit for many years of consistency across that front. And this is just, again, it's not a question of if you pay, it's a question of how and when. And I'd much rather pay $2, $3, $4 a month than pay by losing control of our water and sewer system to a receiver and experiencing something like Flint, Michigan experienced when that happens. And so, again, I make a motion, and I thank John and Tom and their staff.
Yeah, I'll second, to make sure we don't get one of those bad moratoriums.
Yeah, that's another one, yeah, that's the.
Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Next order of business is 8.2, ordinance 4912-25. This is the third and final reading. It's an ordinance to amend ordinance 4663-18 entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for Permits, Tapping Fees, and Fair User Charge System of Billing for Use of the Johnson City, Tennessee Brush Creek, Knob Creek, and Regional Wastewater System, and All Ordinances Supplementary Thereto and Adminitarian thereof of Appealing Ordinances 4663-18 and Enacting the Following Provisions in lieu of Instead Thereof."
All right. Mr. Witherspoon, again.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Ms. Bell, Ms. Lous, Tom Witherspoon, again, Director of Water Service Services. So this ordinance is for the wastewater side of the fence. Again, capital improvements, operations, continued high level of operations. The recommendations that we've incorporated into the ordinance were presented by Rafatellus, our financial consultant, on January 23rd, 2025, at work, public work session that was held with the Commission. And the adjustments are based over four years for both rates and tap fees. And the adjustments are based over four years for both rates and tap fees. The investment of the wastewater infrastructure system protects public health, protects local streams and lakes, and provides opportunity for sound, responsible economic growth and development. As a reminder, again, we are blessed with three wastewater plants, whereas most cities our size have one wastewater plant. So again, if it seems like we're always doing something to a wastewater plant, we are. Capital projects include six debt-funded projects totaling about $41 million, along with increases that continue to allow us to replace and rehab the wastewater collection system. Project renovations at the Knob Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant are probably the largest, the biggest priority. That plant is reaching capacity. We also, in the collection system, are renovating three large wastewater pump stations, one in each of the treatment basins, and then additional work within the Brush Creek plant. A number of the improvements we're renovating or replacing are in excess of 50 years old, so those components don't remain very reliable after that point in time. The map indicates that we are doing these improvements across our 162-square-mile service area, and we believe that it'll take about three to eight years to deliver most of these plans. And so that's, again, why we try to recommend that the delivery and the funding of that is over multiple years. The approval of the ordinance is recommended by the staff.
I will make a motion to approve. I did want to tell you, Mr. Witherspoon, I ran into one of the officers, I guess, of the Boone Lake Association, and they regularly check the water quality in the lake, and particularly up where the Wataga River empties into Boone Lake. And he could not be more complimentary of our wastewater treatment and the responsibility that we share with all the people who live on the lake to make sure that it is just water going back in.
Just echoing that, they recognize, and certainly while they appreciate the staff's level of operation of the plant, they recognize the community's investment to be able to do that, and the Commission's decisions for that.
Well, and your leadership, you know, 20 years ago wasn't near as clean as it is now, so thanks for cleaning our poop.
Do we need a motion?
I made it.
Oh, I'll second it. Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball.
The last order of business is to consider a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, approving the Economic Impact Plan for the Brush Creek Development Project and authorizing city officials to take all actions necessary to implement the plan. I think in lieu of Alicia Summers being here, we have Lexi Vance here to present for her.
Thank you, Ms. Vance.
I'm Lexi Vance. I'm an economic development specialist who cannot find the present button because I can't see.
I think go up to the top slideshow, and then far left.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. So this is about tax increment financing, and I want to start by telling you guys a little bit about what TIFs are and why we can do them. So here's a little bit from the state statute that allows industrial development boards to authorize TIFs. So to prepare and submit to each affected city and county an economic impact plan with respect to an area that includes a project within the meaning of Tennessee Code annotated and such other properties that the Industrial Development Board or corporation determines will be directly approved or benefited due to the undertaking of a project. Tennessee Code can also authorize cities and counties to allocate new incremental tax revenues which arise from the area subject to the Economic Impact Plan to the Industrial Development Corporation to promote economic development, to pay the cost of projects, or to pay debt services or bonds or other obligations issued by the IDB to pay the cost of projects. This Economic Impact Plan is adopted pursuant to such statutory authority. Okay, so TIFs are basically a way to finance projects. It's debt repaid from incremental increases in property value. Really, the main point of this is that whatever the tax base for this property is right now, it'll stay the same. We're not going to lose any revenue. It's just that when the development starts and that property value increases, we'll reinvest it back into the project. The IDB, so here's a little bit about why the IDB can do it. TIP loan structure, the governmental agency or the IDB is always the borrower. The developer is typically responsible for arranging the TIP financing. TIP loans are without resource to the governmental agency or the local government. That means if the developer defaults on the loan, the IDB is not responsible for repayment of the debt to the lender. TIP financing is secured and repaid by the governmental agency, pledge of tax incremental revenues arising from a defined area for a specific period of time. So there's a lot of different types of projects that the IDB can issue TIFs on. For this one, we're going to focus on retail. TIFs eligible public infrastructure expenses. So TIP funds can only be used on public infrastructure, and here you can see a list of some of the ways it'll be used in this project. The Brush Creek Burlington Mills TIP project, this is a mixed-use residential project. It's 34 acres. It's phased out in six phases over eight years. It's going to be $240 million in investment estimated, 1,049 residential units, and 100,000 square foot of retail space. Components of a TIP are a term sheet, that's negotiated business terms, developer and economic development. Economic Impact Plan and Resolution, that's an agreement between the IDB, City Commission, and County Commission, approved for each entity. Project Development Agreement, an agreement between the IDB and the developer comes after the EIP, which has been approved by all entities. So right now in this process, we are on May 15th. So next we'll go to the CIA Committee for the County and then County Commission. Burlington Mills is currently 22.1 acres. It's 500 square feet of warehouse space. It is 110 apartments, and it has eight commercial spaces. So we can see here a couple maps that show how that creek is currently covered. And we're going to go into some phasing. Here's Phase 1, and that will result in 773 apartment units, 60,000 square feet of commercial space, nine buildings, a town square, outdoor recreation and walking paths, restoration of Brush Creek. And then we have Phase 2, which is an additional 276 units, an additional 40,000 square feet of commercial space, four additional buildings, stormwater retention, and a public park. And complete, this will result in 1,049 units, parking structure, 100,000 square feet of commercial space, 13 buildings, a town square, and the restoration of Brush Creek. And here's some of the amenities that'll be available to residents of those apartments. You can see some conceptuals. And here is the TIP district, and here you can see all the six phases broken out.
Which is the first phase again out of that?
Phase 1, it's on your far left, 1A.
Very far left, okay.
Yes. Sorry, do you want to go back?
Yeah, no, you're fine. I know which one now.
Okay. Phase 1A starts May 2025. That's going to have some residential units, and in that middle box, you can see what the TIP money would actually be used for. And 1B, that will be more residential units and some retail space. And then there will also be improvements to West Walnut. Phase 1C, more residential, more retail. 1D, again, more residential, more retail. And you can see the end of Phase 2. Phase 2A, 183 units residential and another 15,000 in retail space. And 2B, it's 183 units and 15,525 square feet. One more time, I'll show you the complete specs of this project, 1,049 units, 13 buildings, and 100,000 square feet of retail space. So in the TIP term sheet, we have basic information that you guys should already have in your packets. The maximum amount of the TIP would be 21.7 million plus interest, and that would be over 20 years. And one more time, all those six phases, because they start two years apart, it's kind of like six mini-TIFs for each different parcel. Okay, and here is the budget, and that really is just the public infrastructure that they would spend the money on. So it has like demolition, parking, things like that in there. Some more specifics of the term sheet would include construction of the stormwater detention area park. We talked about that earlier today. There's a retail component, which is how we're entering into the TIP. And anything else? The IDB will charge a fee equal to 2.5% of the tax incremental revenues, and that goes to debt services. And the public benefits of this project, so annual economic impact is estimated at 103.3 million, and total capital investments are estimated at 240 million. It'll support 730 jobs. Direct sales tax will be 1.3 million annually. Indirect sales and property taxes, 1.4 million annually. Total new housing units, 1,049. I'm going to guess that a couple of you have heard me talk about our housing needs assessment, and I think that this goes a long way with our housing priorities. It enhances the city's revitalization and rejuvenation of a blighted area. If you guys have been there recently, I think that we can all agree it's blighted. An opportunity for retail recruitment. Right now, there's probably some retailers that we're missing out on because they can't find viable space. Additional public benefit, increase stormwater capacity, road and bridge improvements on West Walnut, increase in high-density residential expansion of the Tweezy Trail, increase in retail opportunities, beautification and utilization of Brush Creek, increase in sales tax revenue, and increase in property tax. So the Economic Impact Plan is what we're hoping that you guys will adopt today, and here is the IDB approval that we got yesterday. So the request is for approval of the Economic Impact Plan for the Brush Creek Development Project to the City of Johnson City and Washington County, Tennessee, and authorize the city officials to take all action to implement this plan, and staff request approval.
Any questions?
I do. The number of jobs created, the 732, I think that's what the number was. Was that after full build-out, they'll be working in retail? That doesn't include...
It's not just retail workers, that includes construction workers, too.
Okay, that was my question. You know, we're going to keep contractors busy for a long time.
Almost a decade.
Yeah.
And then this also kind of, it basically kind of improves the current public street that's kind of a little funky, and so it'll incorporate into the project.
This attracts private dollars to enhance a public asset.
And then it, and then a lot of it's, I think, the flood mitigation, and it sounds like there's a bunch of string banking and opening a stream back up and green space that comes along with this.
Yes, absolutely.
And one other question, I don't know if you can answer, but I know on TIP district, it's figured one way, but on a project TIP, is money for schools still kind of held back? Do you know?
I would have to ask our lawyer.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
That's a curious question.
I don't think so, but...
Bob's shaking his head out here.
It is.
It is?
I thought so. I thought, do the schools still get their... I'll make a motion to approve.
And I would second it. Could you take us back to the map of the footprint that shows McKinley Road? Because I think there's several things happening in this project that people who know that area of town...
Is this the map you're referring to?
That's, well, no. There's another one. That one, okay.
Lots of maps.
Yeah, so right now, you've got this old mill property. It's a, you know, an old industrial facility built on top of a creek, which is ill-advised. The road, McKinley Road contours around it and then hits Walnut really close to where traffic starts to stack to get out onto State of Franklin. And so, just for neighbors and citizens who might be interested, this project like does a lot of different things that are helpful. It deals with the stormwater because you're not pushing water into a culvert under a building. It deals with the road because it moves that intersection away from State of Franklin. It deals with our housing need. I mean, there's just a bunch of really good things that happen here, and so I just want people to appreciate how many different beneficial consequences there are.
Go to the ends, you guys can see. Oh, my God. I'm so sorry.
And the project logo has the state flower, the iris, on it.
Okay.
And we've got a motion and a second, I believe. Any other comments? If not, Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
That is the last item on the agenda.
Commissioner comments or board reports? I started with you last time. Commissioner Wise?
JCDAs combining its April and May meeting, and the May, the rescheduled meeting for both months is a week from tomorrow.
Ms. Brock, Commissioner Brock.
I do not have anything tonight.
Did CBB meet?
Uh, no, I was not at it.
Okay, all right.
I was out of town.
Commissioner Fowler?
I have nothing tonight. Been traveling a little bit, so.
Yeah, glad to be back.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, just to, we got Blue Plum June 6th and 7th coming up.
Yeah.
Good thing downtown for the community to beware of.
Friday nights start on the 31st, right?
Oh, yeah, great.
Planning Commission met earlier this week, and quite frankly, I can't remember everything, but there was some zoning resolutions that had to come before us that are in reference to Washington County, but nothing major that I can recall.
Easy things to call over.
But I think that's it.